Okay, we're going to call to order this meeting 6:30 PM. And for those of you who would like to join me, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance now. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve this agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Councilmember Ager.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Aye.
Okay, and also I think I was supposed to do a roll call vote, excuse me, so let's do that as well.
Councilmember Ager.
Here.
Councilmember Gerengelli. Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Here.
Mayor Blash.
Here. Okay, thank you. I'd like to do the land acknowledgement. So the Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral land of the Coast Mewoc people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself, all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. I'm now going to read the meeting protocol. So the mayor shall maintain order at the meeting. The council has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to facilitate the conduct of the people's business and to encourage civil engagement in town council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place them in silent mode. Shouting, clapping, booing, stomping, or other disruptive behavior during public comment or council deliberation is discouraged in order to provide a respectful and comfortable environment for all residents to express their point of view. Clapping is acceptable for items such as police pinings, proclamations, welcoming new staff and council members, and other celebratory announcements. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM and ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. And do you need to record that? All the council members are here? Okay, thank you. All right. So we're going to start tonight with some presentations. And I'm going to start out, so we have two presentations, and they are both proclamations. So I would like to start by reading the proclamation honoring Margaret Miles on her retirement. So I'm going to come down there to do that. Okay, so thank you for being here. I'm going to start the proclamation now. So this is a proclamation honoring Margaret Miles on her retirement. Whereas Margaret Miles has served as the branch manager of the Fairfax Library since August 2011, dedicating over 13 years to fostering a vibrant, inclusive, and community-centered library experience, and whereas under her leadership, the Fairfax Library has blossomed, quite literally, with the completion of the Fairfax Library Garden in October 2022, transforming the library's grounds into a welcoming outdoor space for reading programs and pollinator appreciation, and whereas Margaret's commitment to community well-being extended beyond bookshelves as she spearheaded a library of things that includes hiking backpacks and stargazer telescopes, bringing access to nature and science to the entire community, and whereas she championed a wide range of innovative programs and services, including a community seed exchange, bilingual Spanish storytime, and mobile showers that provide access to basic hygiene for those most in need, and whereas Margaret's sense of humor, warmth, and occasional musical performances have made the library not just a place for books, but a hub of joy and community spirit, and whereas her dedication has left an indelible mark on the Fairfax community, turning the library into a place where everyone feels welcome, whether they're seeking knowledge, a quiet space, or a good laugh. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that we extend our heartfelt gratitude to Margaret Miles for her outstanding service, leadership, and the laughter she brought to the Fairfax Library. May her retirement be filled with the same joy and adventure she so generously shared with her community.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me be your librarian for all these years. It's been great. It's been a great honor. It's been wonderful seeing children grow up in this community and become great library users. I wanted our library to be the heart of our community, and we have so many programs at our library. If you haven't looked at our events calendar lately, we have programs for babies all the way up to seniors, so check us out.
And we're going to do public comment, but we're going to do it after both presentations. So in case you were wondering, so, you know, stay around if you want to say something for Margaret. And I'm now going to move on to a proclamation for Jack Jugkins as soon as I find it. Okay, here we go, and there you are. All right. Whereas Jack Jugkins has served 17 years as a major influential member of the Fairfax Open Space Committee, 2008 to 2025. Whereas a significant part of that time, he was the vice chair of the committee under chairs Mimi Newton and then Susan Pascal-Barron. Whereas Jack was also a driving force and legal advisor as the resident attorney with the FOSK subcommittees for, one, acquisitions, and, two, governance. And whereas he also served on the joint FOSK San and Selmo Open Space Committee for the annual meetings and get-togethers. Whereas for Fairfax Open Space acquisitions during his tenure, Jack played a significant part of the successful purchase of the 15-acre Sky Ranch in 2015 with the San and Selmo Open Space Committee and the County of Marin, and whereas most recently and notably, one of his crowning achievements was help negotiating the purchase of the 100-acre Wall property, a multi-decade effort to preserve the crown jewel of Fairfax Open Space, and whereas most importantly, Jack worked with Bill Long of the Marin Open Space Trust to successfully secure a $500,000 grant from the California Coastal Conservancy for the Wall property acquisition, and whereas along with his work to write the grant application, Jack's relationship with the Conservancy staff was critical to securing the funds, and whereas he was a guiding light, wordsmith, and steadfast helper for those important purchases, as well as the smaller acquisitions or property owner donations of tax-defaulted open space parcels in Fairfax, and whereas he helped to develop criteria for assessment of potential parcels for open space acquisitions, and whereas he helped with revisions and reviews of the open space components of the town's operating plan to save ridge lines, and whereas Jack served multiple years in the 1990s on the Fairfax Planning Commission, and whereas for several years as a FOSK member, he served as a representative to the Fairfax Tree Committee, and whereas his involvement in the community has included his many years as a heartfelt volunteer with the Fairfax Food Pantry on Saturdays to deliver food for the elderly and shut-ins. There's more. I guess he's done a lot. Whereas he influenced neighbors and friends with environmental stewardship values to raise recycling awareness to help reduce and divert plastics and other materials from landfills, and whereas as a FOSK member, he labored several consecutive years to remove invasive broom from Jolly Hill Open Space, and whereas he was a great helper with the numerous fundraisers and outreach events of FOSK, such as the Fairfax Festival Information Booth, and whereas the FOSK fundraisers and film or lecture nights at the Fairfax Women's Club, he dutifully provided the large metal tubs to hold the ice and keep the liquid refreshments cold, and whereas he started in the early years of FOSK with the first-ever FOSK organic pancake breakfast, flipping flapjacks as quickly as possible to accommodate the line going out the door to fundraise for the purchase of the Egger Redwood Preserve. Whereas he will be remembered for riding his bicycle to the monthly meetings of FOSK at the youth community center before the pandemic, and then to the Fairfax Women's Club after the pandemic. Whereas his love of the outdoors, hiking Fairfax Trails, biking, and backpacking should play a larger part of his free time. Whereas a devoted husband to his wife Sandy and a father of two adult sons, he will be able to spend more time with his family, and whereas he has been a good role model for our FOSK youth members over the last 14 years of that mentorship program, and whereas he has been a valuable Fairfax community member and resident for about 40 years on Bellinas Road, and whereas Jack Jugkins has been named a member emeritus and forever friend of the Fairfax Open Space Committee for its mission and efforts to preserve the visual and environmental values of the community through the purchase of undeveloped land in and around Fairfax. The goal is to provide sanctuary for indigenous flora and fauna for future generations. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the town of Fairfax honors and thanks Jack Jugkins for his decades of exceptional service, leadership, and dedication to the preservation and enhancement of the community's open spaces.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and members of the town council. It has been a pleasure doing what I've done, really. I've enjoyed it completely. From that list, no wonder I'm exhausted. But best of all, it's been working with all of these great people, some of whom passed through the Open Space Committee, some of whom are on our town council, some, many of whom either were on the town council or now on the Open Space Committee, or continue to serve their community in other ways. It's been a pleasure working with the current members of the Open Space Committee as well as the past, and thank you.
Okay, and so we're going to just see if council members want us to say something at this point, they can go ahead, and then we'll go to public comment. Okay, you go first, and then?
Yeah, I have comments on each. Congratulations to you both. First, Margaret, I just, I've shared this with you in the past. I don't know where you are. There you are. I love our library. It is such a cornerstone of our community, and three generations in my family, my mother has appreciated and attended programs at the library, my children, I do regularly. And it's just a really short story. One of my children is 19, and when she was 16, she walked by, you know, the main, the side room, and she saw some older adults crocheting, and she walked in and became part of that community and would not miss a crocheting meeting, and they all became friends. And she was the youngest by probably 60 years in that group, and she just loved it. And that's, it's building community is what you've done. And the staff at the library is so warm and welcoming, never put out by any question you have, as it should be, and you've just done a phenomenal job, and I'm just deeply, deeply grateful. Thank you. And Jack, I mean, your commitment and passion, what you've done in your role on FOSK with such heart, and I came to you several times with questions, not knowing a lot, and you always took the time, made time, and so grateful and appreciative of the Wall property in particular, which was, I know, a huge, huge win for yourself personally, but the whole community. So thank you for all your years. Thank you.
So first, I want to thank Margaret for all her years of service to our community. I don't know anybody who doesn't love the library, and it's always packed, and the classes are amazing, particularly in the last few years, so many programs for older adults, which has really, really helped our community, because as we know, we get more isolated as we get older. So the library is a welcoming place. I'm constantly reading books out of that library or taking books out that I don't have time to read. But thank you for all your service, and I'm sure one of the things that you've done is pass along your spirit of welcome and, you know, having folks enjoy the library to the folks that remain. So wish you all the best, and I'm glad you live in Fairfax, because we'll still see you. Oh, San and Selmo, okay. Okay, so we won't see you. You'll have to come back and visit us, and then, okay, well, we'll wave to you as we go across the bridge. Great, thank you, Margaret. And Jack, I think I joined the Open Space Committee shortly after you had been in since 2008. I thought you predated me by several years. And we've had the pleasure of working on some crazy projects over the years, and you brought to us tax-default properties, some of which we got, some of which were paid off in the last-minute donations. It's just, you know, you have really committed yourself to open space, and I think my most recent positive experiences have been with you on the work for the Wall property, just getting Jason Frescos to come to your house and having come to Jesus about stop destroying that property. It's, and your relationships with the Coastal Conservancy really helped get that half a million-dollar grant, which really brought us over the edge. So I'm sure this is a great time for you to move on, because we got the jewel of Fairfax, of which you were a critical part of that. So thank you for all your years of service, and I know you still live here with Sandy, so we will see you. You're moving to Richmond? Anyway, thank you so much for all your years of service, and it says a lot that people care so much about this community, and you are one of our exemplary citizens. Thank you.
I've got a suggestion for you, Jack. So many people worked so hard to preserve the coast with Prop 20 and the succeeding Coastal Act of 1976, and then the Coastal Conservancy, which you provided legal counsel to. Right now, the Coastal Commission is under threat like it's never happened before for both the state legislature and President Trump. He wants to shut it down so it can drill off the California coast. So if you've got any spare time, and you can use your legal expertise, that jump in this fray and help the Coastal Commission out, they look forward to it. Thank you, Jack.
Okay, I think I'm going to open the public comment on this in a minute. I'll just say really quickly, I already read the proclamations. I don't need to say a lot more in public, except that both of you have been amazing pillars in our community, promoting both cultural engagement and also, you know, actually preserving the open space that we so love and so much makes this two different parts of the spirit of our community, the cultural part and then the open space and the landscape. So, you know, really exemplary, and I hope that there will be people who can fill your shoes, because it's been amazing. So I'm now going to open it up to public comment on this, on presentations.
Good evening. I'm Michael Ardito with the Fairfax Open Space Committee with?
Susan Pascal-Barron.
So we have a tradition that for all of our retiring Fairfax Open Space Committee members, we give them a certificate of appreciation. We typically do it at like one of our meetings or one of our events, like one of our fundraisers. But on this rare occasion, when there's a proclamation on the town council, we can do it right here, right now. So we have a certificate of appreciation to Jack Jugkins for 17 tremendous years as a valuable member, vice chair, and leader for acquisitions of open space with the Fairfax Open Space Committee, presented on May 7, 2025, and it's signed by myself and Susan Pascal-Barron. And as you heard, we have made Jack a member emeritus, along with one of our charter members, Ted Bright. So he's on our roster, and you're always welcome to come to all of our meetings and all of our events. We hope to see you.
And I just wanted to say thank you so much for being an incredible teacher to all of us.
Hi, Jody Tims Cascade Drive. I don't know you, Jack, but wow, you've done a lot, so I just want to thank you very, very much. And Margaret, I just want to thank you. I've been able to work with you for, I don't know, 12 or 15 years, between age-friendly events at the library and climate action committee events. Your leadership, your spirit, what you've done for the library, top-notch. So thank you so, so much. You'll be missed.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lana Lohan, Director of County Library Services, and I just wanted to thank the town council and all the community members for their celebration of Margaret today. I don't think I can add anything that wasn't already said. She's also been, actually, I say, she's published in the Marin Independent Journal as stopping a counterfeit bill criminal in our library. So, you know, add that to Margaret's resume, along with helping children at the same time. I just want to say we will miss Margaret tremendously. Her impact on the Fairfax community is known and felt, and I also want to thank the council for their partnership and celebration of libraries and staff. It isn't happening every day, as we know, in a new administration, and it clearly shows the value of library services in the community and the importance to all of you. So thank you for celebrating and recognizing a member of our team who has served a great, you know, life's journey and work here in this community, and we will miss Margaret tremendously.
Ramona Little Taylor, Assistant Director of County Library Services. Thanks to the town council for your recognition of Margaret. And Margaret is part of the reason I am here at MCFL, because Margaret hired me as a librarian to you at Fairfax. So thank you, Margaret, for taking a chance on a girl from Tennessee to come and be a librarian in Fairfax. It was wonderful. I do want to invite you all to come to a public celebration at the Fairfax Library this Friday at 2:00 PM. We'll be celebrating Margaret with food and music. And then, Margaret, I appreciate you so much in many ways, but I want to recognize you as a children's librarian and share a quote from one of my favorite children's books, Where the Wild Things Are, by Maurice Sunnek. "But the wild things cried, 'Oh, please don't go. We'll eat you up. We love you so.' And Max said, 'No.'" "The wild things roared their terrible roars and gnashed their terrible teeth and rolled their terrible eyes and showed their terrible claws. But Max stepped into his private boat and waved goodbye." We'll miss you, Margaret.
So I'm going to reiterate that this is open time for talking about the two presentations we just made, and then the regular open time will happen after this and after we have an announcement. So thank you.
On topic, Susan Brandborg. I'd like to personally thank Margaret for working with us as the Friends of Fairfax Library, and we were able to accomplish a whole lot, especially during the, even during the COVID and during the garden project. But most of all, I don't think I'll ever forget her beautiful voice when she sings her Celtic songs. Thank you, Margaret.
Good evening, council. Mimi Newton, Mono Ave. I just want to say thank you to Margaret. I didn't know you, but awesome. And Jack, you know, it's hard to put into words how emotional it is to talk about how fabulous you've been to work with on the Open Space Committee. You know, it's really been an honor to serve with you on that committee. You provided so much support. You know, we were the two lawyers for a while, and I always appreciated your experience, your drive, your know-how, and would have loved to just defer to you on all the legal questions that came up all the time, because it was just, it was just so good to work with you. Our late nights working on the priority conservation area proposal, you know, finding the things in your basement that you graciously stored for us that compelled you to reorganize the basement, which, you know, I appreciate personally. And just how much passion and joy and fun it was to working with you. Thank you so much for all your years of hard work on the Open Space Committee.
Thank you. Okay. So are there any other comments specifically on the two presentations or proclamations we just made? One more, okay? Yeah, it's been a little confusing tonight, but thank you for standing up and getting up here. Thank you.
That one. Liz Frohnerberger, Fairfax. My mom, Mary Ann Schaefer, was a librarian for decades in Marin County, and I had the pleasure of buying the very first two bricks in the garden that you did. And I go down to visit, one's for my husband, one's for my mom, and librarians do great stuff, particularly right now when librarians are having to be at the forefront of defending books and writing and trying to be inclusive of our LGBTQ community. Librarians have an unbelievable backbone to standing up for what's right, so deep thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if, if there are no more comments on the two proclamations, I am going to, oh, and let's go to Zoom, sorry about that. Okay, so there's no one on Zoom. We're going to move to regular, you know, open time for public expression, but I'm going to really quickly, and thank you for everyone who showed up for those presentations, I want to really quickly have a?
Report out.
Report out. Thank you. Report out from closed session. Thank you.
Yes. The council held a closed session earlier this evening, and they have authorized me to report that the council received an update on the Kuntzvie, town of Fairfax lawsuit, and the court has moved the hearing on the motion to dismiss the lawsuit to June 10.
Okay, thank you. So now we're going to move to open time for public expression. So this is up to 30 minutes, and then we have to take the rest of the public comment at the end of the meeting. This is a huge meeting, so, you know, we'll have to move along. So everyone will have, this is time to address the council on matters not on the agenda. All comments are limited to two minutes. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any agendized, unagendized item. If there are still raised hands after 30 minutes, open time will be continued at the end of the agenda. So let's go ahead and start open time. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. I feel like back in school when I volunteered to go first to get it over with. Yeah, thank you for your dedication and continued service to our town. And a special shout-out to Councilmember Hellman for doggedly pursuing the representatives of Mill Creek to finally get them to do an event open to the public about the proposed project at School Street. I attended it, and there was a lot of shock and dismay and anger and more questions than answers, I think, afterwards. And I feel like the recall is distracting us away from where we need to put our focus. This train is barreling down the tracks towards our small town, and nobody wants this big project. So I'd like some direction from the council out to the members of Fairfax and what we can do if we can't stop it. Is there a way we can change the trajectory, change the outcome? And I don't want the answer to be recall to our council members. That is not going to change this housing mandate. So we need to move beyond the recall, and we are wasting precious time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's Chuck Wright. You know, the picture that was just presented with, with the presentation about the ideal nature of Fairfax is truly, that's what I love about Fairfax. I also attended the School Street presentation at the pavilion. I see that the design has not changed in the last, I don't know, six to eight months that I've seen it. It's still just complete facades facing everything. My questions are this. My questions are this. It's obvious from the, from the confidence that the developers showed in that, that they said, you know, this is almost a done deal. As a matter of fact, because of the zoning, that they could actually build many more, like up to 300 units. So my question is, what approvals have been made that have affected this? Where are we in the process? The second question is, how much influence? And what can we do to influence the design of this project? Because I don't think there's a single person in Fairfax that looks at it and says, "Hey, this is great." To me, it looks like San Quentin. It's the same type of, you know, massing with a center courtyard, all the massing facing all the streets. So, what approvals? What about environmental impacts survey? I know that it's diminished by the state. But the question is, what can the Town Council and the Planning Commission do about this? It's too high. It needs to go down. We know that it can go down. We know that it can go, it can, it can go subterranean, but it's all about cost and profit. We know that. We want to preserve the good feeling of the library. So please, tell us what we can do.
Thank you. And I'm going to mention that if we're not answering your questions tonight, it's because we can't answer questions on unagendized items, but we will be taking into account these questions and seeing what we can do about them. So, thank you.
Hi, Rick Hamer, former resident of School Street Plaza. Okay, one of the things I want to point out about this project at School Street Plaza is that the interested parties, which will have to be brought up according to the government code, extend so broadly that they cannot be identified as only a handful of people, which means that, that we need to publicly notice for everyone to see. So, all interested parties, no matter where they've dispersed to, can be given notice. We need to have expedited very quickly an impact fee. Okay? The idea that we could put up 240 units without, without them paying their fair share of roads, schools, and other impact sidewalks and what have you is absolutely absurd. The definition of affordable in our inclusionary ordinance is not, not appropriate. We, we made it moderate income in order to attract developers. Well, the developers came. So apparently, we made it too big to attract developers, so they came. It's appalling that the developer thinks they can take over School Street between the ballfields and Central Park and the West Marin Locate, this is almost a quote, "needs to be relocated because they are too noisy." This is absurd that we would relocate our Little League over their noise because a developer doesn't like it. So, please, we, I, I've already mentioned this to our mayor's meeting. I'll get time going. If we can, if we can give the case with the encampment till after the Fairfax Festival, we can extend the amount of time that their stake is in the ground, so they would be subject to a, to an impact ordinance and the other things I just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Right down here. Hi, my name is Wendy Lee. I'm a local resident for 40 years in Fairfax. I'm a grandma and raised three kids here. And before, I was raised in San Onofre. First, I'd like to thank the council for all the work you've all been doing. I appreciate that we got to see the plans for School Street Plaza. I have many concerns about the six-story monstrosity. The architectural design is not characteristic of our town, and the water and fire concerns me. The town has really had its back against the wall with the state law, SB 330, and potentially dreadful consequences if they don't comply. I don't see any fault in part of the town. It's a state law that's excessive. But SB 330 was enacted in 2019, and it's only in effect for 10 years. So the delay could be our friend. Only four more years to go. Here's a question for our Town Council. Why so many units at School Street Plaza? And why can't we spread the units around to other sites? I'd like to see real workshop with our community to determine what we could do or anything to improve the outcome. Collaborating approach. We want to be involved. We want our voices heard. We want respect, we want you to respect all of us citizens. I'm opposed to the recall. It's a waste of $65,000. Let's all work together and not waste time. Time is the essence. Let's resolve this. There are many unanswered questions that the community would love to get answered. I feel that's not asking too much. Our common ground is to achieve a goal of working together, hopefully with a pro bono facilitator. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Tim Ezekiel. I'm, I've been a resident of Fairfax for my whole life. I also would like to thank the council for setting up the meeting at the, for the School Street Plaza project. I personally was horrified when I went into the building and saw the drawings. I'm just amazed at the scale. I don't believe that the last council created this problem. I don't believe that a recall will solve the problem. I didn't, I think the problem stems from generation, generations of saying no to reasonable growth. If we had planned more judiciously with growth, we may not be in this problem, in this situation right now. I would just like to, I mean, my, the main point is, I would like to implore you all to work together, to help us also work, tell us what to do, and we will help. The town can come together and make this, at least make this a more reasonable project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Ling Shenbel, I live on Dominga. And I would like to see the requisite for the town manager to be living in the town to be restored. That's how it used to be back in the days. And it makes a lot of sense to me that the town manager, the person who is managing the town, would live here and therefore know the town better. So I think that it makes sense to me. So, that's it. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Council. Jody Tims, Cascade Drive. I want to add my voice again to those who are speaking who do not support the efforts to recall our mayor and our vice mayor. Some of us have been volunteering in this town and actively involved in local politics for many years. As part of those many volunteers, I think we all engage in really creative and constructive problem-solving with staff and council to improve the lives of everyone in town. Right now, there's a lot of misinformation and divisiveness that's happening. And I'd really like to hear more from those who are so unhappy about what's happening. Really, just what do they plan? And how do they plan to address all of our community issues short of recalling our two dedicated council members? So, I really would like to ask the community and council members as well to, to tell us how they plan to address our roads, the homeless situation, state mandated, mandated housing development, climate change, equity issues like the plight of low-income homeowners and renters, fiscal oversight, greater transparency. I know these are problems every people are bringing up, but I need to know just, not just what people are mad about, but their vision and what they'd like to see, how they'd like to see things change, especially given our small, very financially strapped town that in 2025, how do you make the changes that a lot of people want to see happen? It would be really happy, it would be really helpful to know the plans, solutions, strategies, the means that people intend to use to unify the town and to build collaboration and communication with those especially that you disagree with. I personally am listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Gwen Frow, and I'm a Fairfax resident. Ditto to Wendy Lee said everything. She asked very astute questions. I'd like to thank the mayor and the Town Council for their work to bring the plans for the School Street Plaza development to our attention. I, too, have grave concerns about the massive six-story structure that does not fit within the character of our town. However, I'm also extremely concerned over the recall attempt when all efforts should be focused on dealing with the impending monstrosity. This will require all hands on deck. A recall will only serve to cause divisiveness in our town and chaos in our town. Your constituents want a Town Council that comes together to resolve issues. When was the last time you all met to work on something? This factionalism does not serve your constituents. Pulling our community together is what is needed to collectively deal with this situation. And it starts with your leadership. It's what we deserve from our Town Council, not one that is divisive. I'm gravely concerned about people that I care about being hoodwinked into believing that the recall will make the School Street Plaza go away. That is misleading and ultimately hurtful. What is your plan? Our backs against the wall. We need a strategy that will unite Fairfax citizens so that we can ask the appropriate questions, write letters, bring in city and Town Councils or at a higher level, and provide comments to galvanize support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Michael Rosenthal, proud Fairfaxian since 1983. I agree with a lot of what's been said. And I've been speaking out against the recall the last couple of Town Council meetings. And just the other day, I found out that Sean Fitzgerald, one of the leaders of the recall, and I actually have something in common. We both love the Fairfax scoop, although he's more of a maple walnut guy, and I like anything with chocolate. But he also, he and I also have something in common with everybody else in the room, apparently, and probably just about everybody in Fairfax in opposing the massive development at School Street Plaza. And, and I know that, you know, it seems that everyone in the room, including the council members, and I know all five council members are opposed to this. So, why are Sean and his cohort so bent on ousting two council members who agree with them on the issue that's front and center on their campaign? I can only surmise that the reason it's front and center is because they know how unpopular it is. And if they can tie Vice Mayor Blash and Vice Mayor Hellman to it, they just might, however disingenuously, they just might succeed.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I think we need to be, well, I don't know. He's not specifically talking about a person. Can somebody, like attorney, please advise on this?
I think you should let the individual finish his comment, and we can admonish everybody to not insult anybody's character.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, well, it's already been said that the recall will do nothing to make the School Street Plaza go away. And I just, I hear a lot of misleading talk to try to get people to sign the petitions. And I just urge everyone to refuse to sign the recall petitions. I'd rather not be here every, every month, but I much prefer to be at the scoop. But I feel the need to speak out in support of our beleaguered public servants. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Next, please.
Can I just clarify something? I have made no statements as to my position on the School Street Plaza development. And there may be others on the council who have, but I have no position at this point.
Oh, okay. Because everyone knows where I stand on it.
Good evening, Council. Bruce Ackerman, also in Fairfax since 1993. I agree with all of the statements that have been made this evening regarding both the School Street Plaza development and our unified horror at it, and the horror at the recall. And I believe it's been said eloquently, and I will add my voice to it, that the recall is divisive and not moving us toward a solution. And this is a time when virtually everybody in the town is agreed on something. And we can make use of that. We can work together to try to figure out, as people have said tonight. And some suggestions have been made about how we might approach this. It's difficult to do because state mandates are what got us where we are, as well as a long history of Fairfax and other towns that led to those state mandates. But we, we need to come together as a community and look for creative solutions to try to mitigate this development. So, I just urge everyone to come together and to stop attacking and focus on the one problem before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Todd Greenberg, representing downtown Fairfax. I'm going to start out a little bit differently than I planned because I want to refute what former mayor Barbara Coler just stated, that she has no position on School Street Plaza. Because when she ran for office this last election, she stated, "We can do this. We can build, maybe not 10 stories, but two, five, or six stories. We can do this." So maybe she's changed her mind. And everybody is allowed to change their mind, but it's disingenuous to represent that you have no position because you ran on doing this. And the record will show that. Now I'll continue with what I had to say before. This town's being mismanaged, and it's being mismanaged from the top. I'd like to ask Mayor Blash to come clean about her involvement with MEHC, who backed this monstrosity of a project that the developers stated could be as many as 350 units at this last PR show-and-tell session. How many years did Mayor Blash work for? MEHC is their housing specialist. And how come she hasn't get us, kept us properly informed about this? I'd like to ask, if appropriate, that Mayor Blash recuse herself from further votes on housing-related matters because of conflict of interest. Next, I'm not sure if everybody here, who I am glad is now attending and tuning in to what's been going wrong here. But there's a million-plus-dollar budget deficit plan for this year. Last year's was budgeted at a million and a half, and the year before was $3.2 million. Fairfax is running in the red. This is unacceptable. Please do not interrupt me.
I'm going to interrupt you because that's going to be an agenda item, so just
I'd like my time back. Also, the town clerk has not attended meetings, and she should be removed?
Thank you. Next, please.
Valerie Geithheim, Fairfax. I think for me, they're two separate issues. One is about the building, and the other is about how, the disrespect that I have received from the council. And I think those are two separate issues, although sometimes they can overlap. And I am for the, for the recall, obviously. And I am for not having a huge six- or seven-story building. This could have been avoided. Before COVID, there were a council, most of the Town Councils from the previous one, before COVID, identified all the available parcels. They did nothing about it, which is how we got here, I believe. And if I'm wrong, please let me know that. But had you not dragged your feet about the parcels that were already identified, and we could have used the ADUs as part of that, I believe, we wouldn't be in this mess. We wouldn't be with corporate, big building who want to do it for cheap and for ugly. And I just, I really think you guys should take some responsibility. And I just, I really think you guys should take some responsibility for that not being dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Rich Dowd, been in Fairfax since 1998. Just want to say good evening, council members, and I just want to point out to everybody sitting in the crowd, there's no doubt that you all love Fairfax. You wouldn't be sitting up there doing this job, this thankless exercise, and help guiding our town, and I do appreciate that, and want to thank you all. The two big issues we have are the recall, in my opinion, and SSP coming up. I think they are not joined at the hip. They're two separate items. What we need to be doing is putting the entire focus on SSP. I don't believe we have nothing we can do. I believe there are things we can do, but we're going to need your help and your guidance, as well as the planning department's guidance about what the opportunities, the community can come around together, put our efforts in place, and see if something can happen. The elephant is SSP. The recall, I believe, is a misguided focus. Anybody who wants to go down that path, here's what I fear. You may win the battle, you're going to lose the war because the efforts are not going to be properly placed. And I want to leave, my final comments is basically, we had an election, you all were elected. My expectation is you all work together. We expect that as your constituency. We welcome it. We need it. All of you have an amazing amount of experience with this town. Help guide us, and let's see what we can do. Thank you.
Okay. Christine, can you tell me how many people are on Zoom right now? Six. I mean, we're getting close to time, but I think that we have enough people. If nobody else jumps up, we can get through these folks and the folks on Zoom. And it seems like people keep jumping up, so it's like a little hard to keep track of how many people are here, but it feels like a lot of people really want to speak, so I'm just going to let people go. And if my other council members are not happy about that, I'm sorry, but it just seems like people really want to speak, so go ahead.
Good evening, town council. Kevin Curtis, from the sphere of influence of San Anselmo in Fairfax and Sleepy Hollow in the county zoning. Sometimes these venues are the only way that we have a voice to the local issues. And thank you, staff. Thank you, police department and fire department. I only have two things that I'd like to convey this evening. One of them is that the 655-83 California Government Code allows for interested, all interested parties to be notified of any activities going on with sites list properties. I have an interest on all the properties within Fairfax on the sites list, and I've conveyed that, and I'd love it if the town were to put something onto the website for the, perhaps under the SB 330 application section or under School Street, to allow for a submittal, email submittal, for those to be notified out to the council, out to the public on anything, for example, the new permit, complete permit application upcoming, whether it seems to be an internal policy of not notifying the public initially when those are submitted. Secondarily, I'd just love to get it on the record that we totally understand that the town council is fighting or up against the ministerial process from the state, and this is something that certainly is causing a lot of problems. But there are two solutions. One, the first solution with 20 seconds left is that there are protected units at the site, in my opinion, and those are the prior residences. The second just occurred, which is the zoning has now seemingly been turned to high fire danger from moderate. Both of those are exempting the ministerial process and turning into, in my opinion, the, based on the law, a discretionary approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, Liliana Lovetso, Fairfax resident of a couple of years and Marin native of 50 years. I'm here basically just to say that we all have heard all the other people talking about, we do not support School Street Plaza, but also, we do not believe that a recall is the situation and solution. So for folks who are against it, let's all work together, come up with some solutions in trying to solve this issue. Also, housing and affordable housing is a big issue here. Also, I want to second what Rick said. I think for the developers, if it goes through, they definitely need to provide impact payments for all of the damages and all of the things that are going to do. When I talked to the lawyers, they mentioned that it was going to be $2,000 for a low-income one studio, and that's supposed to be affordable housing. So I think we're all here, we all believe that, most of us believe, I should say, the recall is a waste of money and time. And I think for everyone, because we all love Fairfax, let's come together, let's try and solve this and figure out solutions to not just a two-year problem. This has been a decade-long problem in Fairfax without housing being built and people stopping any housing, and so now we're here where we are. So let's work together, and that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And, you know, I like, I love that people are clapping, but we're trying to keep people from clapping during comments. Sorry about that, but go ahead.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. Since everyone's giving their dates, I guess mine's like 1973, aside from 12 years out of the country. It's not just School Street Plaza. There are six other sites that have been rezoned for high-rise, high-density. Six additional sites. The recall isn't just based on School Street Plaza. We're talking about what we believe is mismanagement of the town's monies. We're looking at safety of the residents. We have double standards going on with less than 1% of the people who are squatting here versus the people who actually live here. We have infrastructure issues. We have an operating deficit of at least $1.1 million for the next year, but no one wants to even look at staffing and see about, you know, making some type of adjustments there to save some money, but we have plenty of money to spend on more consultants that we don't need.
So I'm going to remind you, we're going to be talking about the budget.
Oh, okay, fine. I was just doing general statements. I have some specifics as far as the budget goes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, and as Mallory said, a lot of disrespect that goes on here. And what I find quite interesting is that people think that the people who caused the problem are now going to solve the problem. The thing about the presentation, the greatest thing about the presentation was that people were walking out of there saying, "I'm nauseous. Where do I sign?" Because it's obvious that if we want to stop this, we will make any type of adaptation, whatever, the only chance we have of doing that is not with the configuration that we have right now in the town council.
Thank you. Next, please, and then we're going to move to Zoom. And part of the reason I'm letting this go is that I think there's a lot of raw feelings from that event, and so I'm just going to let people go. And we are going to have a long meeting. I apologize. We're always trying to balance between letting the public speak and also getting through the business of the evening. So I think this time it's important. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kim Keating. I'm a Fairfax resident. I was at the event at the pavilion last week, and the representative told me that a studio low-income was going to be mid-2000s, so I believe it's more like 2,500. My question is, what is the city going to do to diminish this School Street Plaza project? I'm concerned amongst all the things that have been spoken tonight is also the sunlight. It's going to block and change the sunlight. I'm a first-time homeowner, as of last summer, here, and I'm a school teacher, and I'm concerned about what the safety with fire safety issues, what might that do to our insurance? Is that going to raise our insurance because, other than just being safe? So what is the city going to do to help diminish this project, and what can I do as a citizen to help put the brakes on it being so big? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to Zoom.
There are seven raised hands on Zoom. The first speaker is Kristen, followed by Michael. Kristen, you are now unmuted.
Hi, this is Kristen O'Malley. The average age in Fairfax is 47.9, which is older than the national average. And almost a third of our population in Fairfax is 60 and older, and this is projected to rise to almost 40% in 2030. May is Older Americans Month, and this is a time to recognize older Americans' contributions, highlight aging trends, and reaffirm our commitment to serving older adults. The 2025 theme, Flip the A-Script on Aging, focuses on transforming how society perceives, talks about, and approaches aging. This month, question stereotypes and misconceptions about older adults. Find ways to honor older adults' contributions and explore the many opportunities for staying active and engaged as we all age together. I want to share information about two upcoming events. The Marin County Commission on Aging and the Emeryda Students of the College of Marin will host a public forum, "The Power of Connection: Creating, Building, and Sustaining Community as We Age," on May 20, 2025, from noon to 4:00 p.m. at the Jonas Center Indian Valley Campus of College of Marin in Nevado, California. Dr. Stacy Torres from UCSF will give the keynote presentation on building support and thriving in late life, making a home in the world wherever we go. There will also be two panel presentations featuring residents and civic leaders from rural and urban areas of Marin. There's a buffet lunch and a suggested donation of $25. And on June 9, at 1:30 p.m. at the Commission on Aging General Meeting at 1600 Los Gamos Road in San Rafael, there will be a panel presentation on older women, women in Marin living with change, resilience, and joy. Panelists represent a diverse group of older women in Marin County, and this meeting is open to everyone, and you're welcome to attend in person and virtually. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael, followed by Cindy. Michael, you may now unmute yourself.
And can we also, I'm just going to say, can we just leave it at this seven? Like, if more people start glomming on, I think we're going to have to cut it off, so thank you.
Thank you. This is Michael Sexton, housing provider and long-term resident of Fairfax. First, I support the views of Todd and Mark Bell in regards to the recall. It's a response to past problems, not the cause of the current problem. But I also want to thank Lisa and Stephanie, who coordinated the meet-and-greet with the Florida-based Mill Creek developers the other night. It was very informative. It was also truly horrific to see the abomination of a building being proposed to be built. One of the best aspects of Fairfax is its small-town character, simply the ability to walk the streets, see your neighbors downtown, and know that you reside in a place with limited population and small-town charm. The proposed School Street development is the biggest recent threat to the charm and desirability of our town. The building's look, size, added population would be perfect for Berkeley or Emeryville, but not Fairfax. 243 units and potentially 350 means about 250 additional people, which is an increase in population of 6% at one location. I asked one of the presenters the other night, what's in it for the community? What does Fairfax get out of this? He had no real answer. In many people's perspectives, we are inheriting a list of problems with very few benefits to the town. Make no mistake, this building would be horrible for the community. With all the state mandates, to be sure, some building will happen at the location. However, I believe it's the responsibility of the developer to prove that there will be no adverse effects to the town, and the responsibility of the town council to hold the developer and owner accountable. And I can only hope that the current town council has enough fortitude, creativity, and legal insight, along with actual desire, to put pressure on the developer to bring the project's size into alignment with the honest and reasonable needs and goals of the community. And I hope you won't say that you simply can't, because there are ways to bring them to the table. There are solutions. Make no mistake, this is the defining issue for Fairfax and this town council for the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
The next speaker is Cindy, followed by John. Cindy, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Cindy Ross. I've been living in Fairfax since 1987, and I wanted to start off by saying something that I wasn't planning on saying, but, but I feel like I need to this evening. I used to be the parade chairperson of the Fairfax Festival, and I'm having a really hard time these days with all the battles, the recall, School Street Plaza, all this stuff, multiple people fighting for multiple different reasons, which in some ways are actually the same reasons, but multiple sides, and it gets really complicated. And it's, it's really painful remembering when, you know, I could be the parade chairperson of our fabulous festival and, you know, host multiple people that had different opinions, and we were all having a great time together. Anyway, I want to go ahead and say, speaking about multiple issues, I want to remind the council and the town that May is also Multiple Chemical Sensitivity Awareness Month. It's a condition where people, individuals, experience reactions, sometimes severe, to low levels of chemicals that other people might not react to. I'm going to take a chance and say also, I have MCS, which is why I approached Mayor Blash and Councilmember Egger a couple of months ago to help me address the issue that had to do with fumes from the local laundromat that's making me really sick, along with 36 other people that signed a petition. We're really tired of all these other issues, not taking real needs into account for multiple people.
Thank you. Next one, please.
The next speaker is John, followed by Jess. John, you may unmute yourself.
Hey, my name is John Marshall. I live in Fairfax. I wanted to advocate for ranked choice voting. Sorry. There's, okay. I don't know if you guys can hear me. Hi, my name is John Marshall. I live in Fairfax. I wanted to join to advocate for ranked choice voting. I've been happy to hear some of the councilors familiar. Ranked choice voting is used in increasingly more diverse places in America, and I think it would help residents feel their voices heard better. This enables an instant runoff and allows citizens to vote in order of who they want with less fear of picking the candidate they think could win. Both sides of the recall would benefit from pushing for this in future elections. I understand Marin may need to update to support this, and I would appreciate the town looking into how they can advocate for this position. Additionally, I think we should also consider a shadow ordinance in the midst of School Street Plaza. Other cities have this, and it might be beneficial for the town. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Next, please.
The next speaker is Jess, followed by PJ. Jess, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Jess Lerner. I've been in Fairfax for quite some time, and I want to thank the council members for their excellent leadership, as well as they were able to create that open house for School Street Plaza. I too am concerned about it for the reasons stated previously tonight, especially about traffic and fire safety. However, as most are united in our concern about that and similar projects, I'm also aware that this kind of proposal was inevitable in the state's mandate for new housing, and like another speaker said, we desperately need to think about what we do want for the future and adjust to the need for some creative and well-designed housing so we can mitigate the most negative impacts, even if we reject a poor development over a better one. This is a key issue, but unlike what some are saying, it's not the fault of any council members that the state is mandating and pushing for more housing, and developers are now proposing these plans. That was inevitable. I'm speaking tonight because I'm so truly frustrated when I hear such distortions, lies, and manipulation of truth. I strongly oppose the attempted recall and agree with what so many others have said. A recall would only bring more divisiveness and fuel hostility. Thank you to Barbara Coler for her excellent editorial in the IJ. Everything she said there is truth. This attempt at dishonest, misleading scapegoating is disturbing and does not belong in our town. Recalling two strong women leaders who have worked very hard to support our town and spending over $65,000 of town money we really need to protect is a profoundly misguided effort, and as others have said, the key is we really need to work together. The folks who are aggressively pursuing this recall effort have not explained their plan for the council, for the future, or how they would be successful, or include those of us who don't agree with them. That group does not speak for me. I care about Fairfax's future. Thank you to the town council for your work, and I look forward to our community convening in real conversation and collaborative efforts together. I'm on the team that wants to find solutions and work together.
Thank you. And how many people are left on Zoom? Just PJ or?
There are two speakers left on.
Okay, so we'll get those two in.
PJ, and the next speaker is James. PJ, you may unmute yourself.
Hey, thanks. PJ Pfeffer, Fairfax homeowner, resident.
PJ Pfeffer, Fairfax homeowner, resident, speaking solely on my behalf, not in my capacity as a member of any other body. And I specific, I have no, I guess, opinion yet. Still consuming as much information as I can about the specifics of the School Street Plaza development, but it seems clear that people are looking for something that can be done in the meantime. And I would just like to draw people's attention to the fact that the purpose of submitting this pre-application, which they did, and the deadline that's imposed is because it's to prohibit towns from adopting ordinances after a plan has been submitted that just frustrate the purpose of the plan. But if they don't get a properly submitted proposal done on time, perhaps the town should be ready with the types of ordinances that are fair for everybody but may cause changes for this development. I think, you know, this development wouldn't have been possible, there's no real one town council decision, but a lot of the people advocating for the recall and against this project had an extraordinarily heavy-handed impact on the project we're seeing now because there's no way we'd have a project like this if the just cause eviction ordinances were in effect. Those people wouldn't have been summarily evicted, as was pointed out by one of the main anti eviction supporters at the last meeting and in this one. We need approaches like that, also prevailing wage requirements for building. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Last person, please.
James, you're, you may unmute yourself. Jim, you have to unmute yourself from your computer.
Thank you for turning that up. I think we're just gonna have to move on, unfortunately. Okay, here you go. Great.
Hi, hi, my name's Jim Cosgrove. I'm a resident in Fairfax. The one thing I just wanted to talk about, about the School Street Plaza, is the density bonus for parking. When you take the amount of actual bedrooms and then you divide it by the parking that's being done, where does this parking go? You know, and how do we accommodate the overflow? I mean, we're making the assumption that, you know, they're near transit, and we're already out here in Fairfax, and a percentage of them are going to take public transit. Didn't Nevada just several months ago reject the plan based on that premise, the premise of the people not taking transit? And then that just dovetails into Cal Fire just did their severity ratings here in Fairfax. And I just wonder, I just wonder, I mean, it's severity on the hazards of the fire. It's not talking about the ingress and egress of leaving this town in case of a fire. And now, all of a sudden, we're putting this many more cars where God only knows where they're gonna end up going. So, you know, we're trying to put ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag. So, it's quite concerning to me, and I just hope that we can find some creative ways in which to do it. And the last thing is, is I think we should have, instead of approving the plans, I think we should have modified construction plans instead of just thinking it's gonna be admin in a fast-track process and see what Marin Municipal Water District and what they're gonna do to rip up the roads and the cost to ripping up the roads. If it does go on, is it possible? And what is it gonna look like, and who's gonna end up paying for that? I just think we need to take a look at more of the costs and minimize the size of this structure. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, everyone who spoke. Usually, I would cut it off at thirty minutes, but I just know people are a little raw after that event and felt like they didn't have a time to voice. So, thanks for speaking. I did want to check in one thing really quickly. Heather, are we going to have a session possibly on housing laws and how they impact us?
Yes, we're planning that session, and I don't have the date for you right now, but we are planning to have a full session with both specialized attorneys and our planning director to explain current and upcoming housing law.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Mayor, can I just interrupt?
Yes.
It's freezing up here, and Christine has a thermostat. Could you adjust it, please? Thank you.
Special point of order. Okay, thank you for that. So, we're gonna move to the rest of the agenda, and I'm just gonna mention how it works, which is, you know, we're gonna have the staff presentation first, and then we will have the council give questions to staff. After that, we hear public comment on each item, and then after that, we deliberate and vote on that item. And so, I just kind of reiterate this because we want to make sure we get all the information before we come to a deliberation, and part of that information is members of the public's input. Okay, so we're gonna move to a public hearing, and that public hearing is to conduct a public hearing, read by title only, and adopt an ordinance to designate fire hazard severity zones and local responsibility areas. So, I'm gonna open the public hearing and start out with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. On April second, the council held the first reading of the ordinance. Under consideration would designate the fire hazard severity zones in the local responsibility area based on the updated L R A Fire Hazard Severity Zone map published on February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. State law required Cal Fire to evaluate fire hazard severity zones in the L R As.
Rob, could you kind of say what things are rather than just using acronyms? Not everyone's familiar.
Okay. So, state law required Cal Fire, the state fire agency, to evaluate fire hazard severity zones in the local responsibility areas. In two thousand and twenty-one, Cal Fire expanded its classifications to include moderate and high-hazard zones in addition to the very high zones they already had. The updated maps identify fire hazard levels in areas not covered by the state or federal fire services. Cal Fire developed these maps using the scientific model that assesses fire probability and behavior based on factors like fire history, vegetation, terrain, and weather conditions. These maps indicate hazard likelihood of fire rather than risk and actual vulnerability. Per California Government Code Section five one one seven nine three, local agencies cannot reduce the hazard levels but may increase them. The two thousand and twenty-five Fire Hazard Severity Zone maps extend beyond the locally adopted WUI map, expanding vegetation and defensible space along with construction requirements in the majority of the town. And that concludes. If you have questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, we went through this last month, so thanks for coming back. So, I don't have any other questions other than what a member of the public raised. Did the School Street Plaza sites get upgraded to a higher risk severity zone, to your knowledge?
That location will fall within a high-fire zone according to the new maps, yes.
Okay, and what was it before, did you recall?
It was an undesignated fire zone.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, please go ahead.
Does the School Street Plaza high-fire zone area, will that require any special equipment to protect it?
When we do the formal review of the project, we can make those requirements at those times based on the code at time of review. I have not reviewed, I have not formally reviewed the project yet for code compliance.
Would you say that a six- or seven-story building would need a ladder that we don't currently have?
We do not have a ladder that can reach six or seven in our jurisdiction, no.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know what's interesting is that we've lost our, we live in a cascade, and we've lost our insurance twice already because they said we were in a high-fire hazard zone. But this, the new map, shows it as a moderate area. Were we ever designated high-fire, or was that the insurance companies using high-fire designation as a reason to cancel our homeowner's insurance? Do you have any sense about that?
The insurance is a separate industry from this map. They have their own maps. So, they're not supposed to use these maps for insurance purposes, according to the state legislature and everybody else.
Okay. But basically, this is now gospel for Fairfax, right, this map? It's, I don't have, we don't have the colored one here, but I had it online. But this is, this is it. This is... So, the incorporated part of Fairfax has been designated as, part of it is high and part of it, a lot of it, is moderate. Is that the final, final on the mapping? I mean, it won't change.
The only changes we can make to the map is if you want to increase the hazards in other areas of the town that are designated moderate or undesigned.
Okay, thank you.
That will be the final map when it's adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if no other council members have questions, I'm gonna ask a question. You know, I believe that there are further actions that are related to this map, to approving this map, like passing or approving this map. What does that trigger in terms of codes and behavior, you know, like fire code adoption in Fairfax?
These maps do not adopt, mean change, the fire code adoption. The fire code adoption is gonna come up in fall, where they'll make amendments and will present everything at that time.
Okay, because I'm just wondering about, you know, the rules that households will have to follow once these maps and then that, those new codes are adopted, and just how that'll impact Fairfax, and maybe the time to ask that is in fall. But that is something that I'm thinking about as I've had constituents get very worried about things like, we've had a lot of ongoing issues around trees and foliage removal and whatnot, and people trying to find that balance between fire safety and feeling like the quality of life is very dependent, you know, people here love foliage, so we're just trying to look at that. So, I guess I'll ask that when we come to that. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, just to add to that, the fire codes get released in July first, which will allow us one hundred and eighty days to go through the adoption process to make any local amendments to that. I don't know when the state's coming out with the new zero-to-five-foot ordinance, the Zone Zero, as it's advertised everywhere. That has not been published in a date of release yet, that I'm aware of.
I have another question.
Sure, go ahead.
Concerning the fire zones. In reality, it's the insurance companies, basically, they don't necessarily agree with your fire zones. They agree with some of them, but probably not all of them. They feel in some areas, like Frank's area Cascades, that the fire danger must be a lot higher in their estimation because it's hard, you know, sometimes your insurance gets canceled. Sometimes the rates go up double. Why do you think there's not a correlation? It seemed like you guys would want to be on the same page, in a sense. I don't understand it because it's, as a matter of fact, the School Street Plaza project might prevent people from getting insurance in this downtown area. But I just wonder what your thoughts were, why they're not more aligned?
Well, there's different criteria that the insurance industry has for what they're willing to take the risk and what it's cost to insure, you know, a vulnerable house or a building of any type. I can't speak for the insurance industry. I'm not the insurance industry. But, yeah.
Okay, unless there are any more questions, I think we're gonna move to public comment on this item. Yeah, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie, for asking the question about School Street Plaza and the current designation. May I ask that you ask a follow-up question to the fire official? I thought I heard that he said if you want the fire zone to change, but that was not my understanding of how this modeling had occurred. And I just want two pieces of clarification because I certainly think that it could be very important going forward. One is that none of the members of the town council have been involved in modeling the fire zone changes for School Street Plaza. And then additionally, that the way that that modeling has occurred is through the specific and professional software that the fire department has purchased and through that algorithm has changed the fire modeling and not through any personal preferences of any of the town council or members of the public, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
I think one point of clarification, it's Cal Fire that does these maps. It's nothing to do with locals, correct, Rob?
That is correct. These are Cal Fire maps, minimal maps.
Thank you.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. Kind of brings to mind when FEMA and N F I had a meeting at the Civic Center about flood insurance, and the audience of several hundred people were sure that these were the latest, most accurate maps possible. And one guy said, "Well, I live at the top of Wolf Grade, and I'm being told that at my elevation of four hundred and thirty feet, I need to have flood insurance." I mean, if you look at the map that's supplied, there's a high-fire danger, or a high-fire zone, and then that zone is very short distance from Cascade. I have a friend who got burned out in Oroville. Fire went twenty-six miles in four hours. It was jumping from hilltop to hilltop. It had its own windstorm. How can you have a high-fire danger coming from the Mount Tam area, from the watershed, and then there's maybe, I don't know, a quarter of a mile, and then you're in Cascades? But Cascades is moderate fire danger? How is that even possible? And how can people in downtown, two blocks away from the fire station, be in more danger from a fire than people in Cascade? I mean, a lot of these things just bring questions to my mind, and I'm just wondering about parts of the validity of the study. So, I don't know how you go about asking that, but it would seem to me that it's not very commonsensical that that would be the case.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Todd Greenberg, speaking for many concerned parties in Fairfax, and as a friend of the fire department and as somebody who appreciates their hard work. Knowing, though, that there are multiple different agencies, I want to call out that this staff report is inadequate for both the public and for council members, in my opinion, to be able to make a decision tonight. This map right here that shows the proposed fire maps that you would adopt that have had no local input whatsoever, that are determined, as Kevin said, by a computer model, by Cal Fire, and we appreciate Cal Fire and all their hard work that they do. But there's no local input. And at a prior Fairfax Town Council meeting or Fairfax meeting, it was said that people didn't really understand. And I'm asking you tonight, do any of you understand how these fire maps were actually derived? Are you just gonna accept that they were properly derived? How come there's no local input? Why would you vote for something with no local input that is likely to increase the fire insurance rates or result in people being denied their insurance and having lesser insurance? Next. This, as I said, local data needs to be incorporated, and there's no assessment of the number of fire hydrants or the number of prevention measures here. It seems like doing this is unclear why it needs to be done. It says, this report says, it must be approved by June. But why? What requires us to do that? And then again, there's no comparison to prior fire maps here.
Thank you. Next, please.
You need to press the button, Jim?
Good evening. I thought I had read that Cal Fire is able to be open to working with the local jurisdictions, that they can take in some of our input. I thought I read that somewhere. So, my question is, is, you know, we're modifying some of these maps, and we're considering hazards, and we talk about the hazards of the fire. Do we know what it actually means and what the times are with these different levels of hazards? Because then that drops down again. I'm stuck, I'm just stuck on the idea of jamming more cars into this place. We talk about... We talk about fire safety hazards at School Street, but you're going to have, what, 240 or 300 cars on top of a building in case of a fire, and they're supposed to siphon out? So I just, I just wonder, again, I mean, everyone's doing their modeling, the insurance companies, mine went up 350%. The insurance companies are doing the modeling, CAL Fires are in the modeling, and then we're able to modify. Why can't we do some modeling regarding the safety of us, the actual safety of the people of exiting this town? You know, there has to be some way to kind of thread that needle, and I just don't, don't understand why we're not really pushing that down because of the topography here in Fairfax is quite unique. And I'm not trying to be a NIMBY of squashing development, but at the same time, it's either that way or that way. There's two ways in and out. So I think it seems pretty clear to me that there has to be, hopefully, we can come up with some other considerations and do a little pushback here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? Okay, so we're going to bring it back for deliberation. I did want to mention that we will be, you know, this is somewhat related, but we will be doing more activities around fire safety and evacuation in fall. So for people who are really concerned about that, that is one, you know, useful item. But I wanted to see if we could, I'm going to ask other council members to make comments, and maybe if we can answer some of the community's questions that just came up. I think maybe I'll just start with that, and then we'll move on to council members. So I heard one person say that we can, and I heard this said in the presentation too, that we can, with community input, you can upgrade fire zones, but you can't downgrade them. What is that about? I'm hearing people maybe thinking that they're going to, you know, change something about the trajectory of development, but what, why would a community be able to upgrade the fire zones?
Based on local conditions, we can do our own study and increase the hazard risk. But again, we cannot lower what the minimum state standard is for their maps. We can, and we can do that in other ways besides just this map. We can do that with our locally adopted wildland urban interface map, the WUI map. And there is a whole new code coming out again in July where a lot of the stuff can be addressed for the local areas. By changing this map would be recorded and state moving forward, and that would be the permanent map moving forward. So our recommendation is to adopt it as is and not make those changes at this time.
Okay, but any process moving forward that would change those designations would have to be evidence based, right?
Correct.
Okay. Then another question that I heard was how can Cascade be, you know, I'm going to paraphrase it, but how can Cascade area, which we've always thought of as being very high fire zone, be moderate if it's so close to areas that we think of as, or we know to be high fire severity? How does that work?
Fire still can burn in the Cascades. It's just the level of the degree that it's going to burn based on the model that CAL FIRE presented. It's, the fire can burn through the whole entire area. These aren't maps, aren't stopping the spread. It's just where the intensity is going to be.
Okay. And then.
Can I just hop onto that intensity thing? So forgive me, Rob, I can't remember if you were here for the fire safety event, the three hour Todd Lando presentation this weekend. Were you present for that? Okay, so he did touch on, I think he was trying to be hypothetical, a downtown development where a couple of hundred cars, you know, how does, there's obviously tremendous concern in the community around fire evacuation. And so I was, I think a lot of us learned quite a bit from him. And one, a lot of what he shared was, you know, the downtown area, certainly Sir Francis Drake Corridor, where this is very near, will be protected, right, as an evicted, as a, as a, an evacuation route. And people will be coming down from the hills, and the downtown area will be the safe zone. The fire might blow through it, but it, it'll burn quick. And a new development, as you said, will have to be up to the highest standard fire codes, which there's suppress, like really strong suppression requirements, meaning how the fire spreads from wall to wall, sprinklers, and there is a ladder engine in Kent Fields. But my understanding from talking to other fire professionals is that likely a ladder truck would not be required because of the sprinkler and all the other fire code. I mean, this is all speculative and hypothetical, but you, I don't know if you have any idea how bad information goes aflame in this community, so I would really appreciate you correcting the record and setting us straight here related to that.
So again, we're talking about School Street Plaza, where we have not.
Or a downtown, you know, new structure, you know? We don't, we don't have a full application yet for School Street Plaza.
Any, any new residential downtown?
Any new residential downtown in the zones would be required to be built to the highest standards for building and fire safety, correct? Which would include ignition resistant materials, fire sprinklers, with the exception of ADUs and some other ones out there, so.
And what Todd said is that the likely, there's a, there's a strong likelihood that that building would not even have to evacuate because it would be that safe.
So I.
That's the messenger. This is the messenger, okay?
I'd like to point that out.
I don't believe, I believe you're the messenger. I just don't believe the statement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to point. The fire department. Agency.
Correct.
And he did not speak on behalf of the Ross.
No, he did not.
Because, yeah, I'm going to leave it at that.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I'm just curious, like a lot of people here grew up in town, right? How could not the whole town be under high fire danger? I mean, it's just one big trees and bushes and old roofs and, see, I don't understand how there could be, I understand, I'm just not quite sure what the, to me, the whole thing should be red. It's kind of simple, maybe, huh? But that's, believe me, this, I've seen Santa Rosa burn neighborhoods that you wouldn't, I don't think they were even in the high fire danger areas, and the whole neighborhood went down. So what part of Fairfax is not vulnerable?
This isn't, this is just to do with the severity maps. The fire can still burn outside of these zones on a piece of paper, and they will burn if something happens in those devastating events where wind driven. It doesn't, this scientific model does not account for 100 mile an hour winds. If you go through the studies and read all the details of it, as was in that frequently asked questions in the last one, we provided that in our PowerPoint presentation for people to look at the details of the study. The, I lost my traction there on the backside, but.
On the spot, it just seems like, I just always try to think as, if possible, as logically as I can, and it just doesn't seem like any part of Fairfax isn't in a high fire zone area.
So in, like I said, when you go through the deepness of the study, it takes the urban areas as a 20 acre fire, and it takes the wildland areas, the more of the hillsides in a 50 acre area, I'm just going off memory here.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, that's, that's, it's not for these 50,000 acre fires. I mean, those are wind driven, and we can't control those.
Right, and I actually should have closed the public hearing. So the public hearing is closed, but I wanted to check if other council members have comments. Mr. Egger?
I do. Okay. Just to let you know, what happens when your homeowners is canceled, our insurance now is $15,000 deductible for anything. Rates are up 70%. The coverage is cut by a third. So if a fire blows through the Cascades and takes our home out, we can't afford to rebuild it. That's what's going to happen. So, you know, it's really important that we have good fire protection here in our town. And, you know, we're going to need actual evacuation routes with signage, so folks, most of these fires that occur at night, these, and, and you're trying to evacuate, you get out of bed, you're trying to put some clothes on and get out of the house and get in a car and get out of there. It's dark out, the streets are filled with smoke, it's really tough to evacuate. So evacuation is really an important issue here for our little town. Back in the day, the old Fairfax Fire Department, you should check our hydrants every year. They go around and check the hydrants. Does Ross Valley still do that? Do we get, do the pressure check on hydrants?
We do hydrant checks every year, yes.
Okay, so you have pressure, just thought, you must have a list someplace with all the hydrants showing what the pressure is that, when they check it.
Yes, we have all those lists.
Oh, good, good, okay. Most of these fires happen during red flag days. It's not as if we don't have a warning. It happened in Santa Rosa, it happened in Los Angeles, it happened in Mahina, and we know it's coming. So on those particular days, are we able to staff, like, we have two engines here at the firehouse in Fairfax, a type one and a type three, but we only staff one engine on a regular basis. So when, when, during red flag days, is it possible to staff up both those engines, bring in extra firefighters, or are we short of firefighters too, like, like everybody else is?
There is a, there is a plan in place for those red flag days, and the chief can make those decisions at that time on how many people, based on communications with our county agencies or surrounding neighbors. But there is a plan in place.
Thank, thank you.
I have a, I'm sorry, I have a follow up question.
Yeah.
What is the advantage or disadvantage of approving this or not approving this? What's, is, is it just, it's just a map that we put up on the wall? Or is there, we don't approve it? What's it, I don't understand. I mean, this needs an approval?
So the state required, and the attorney can, you know, do the legal part of it, but yeah, you have 120 days from the date that it was released to adopt it, or I believe it gets adopted automatically and it shows minimum. So it's really just a formality of what we're doing here for these.
Exactly.
Bring me to your attention of what, what is actually going on.
Okay, so there's really no, it's no consequence one way or the other.
Can I, we have the town attorney kind of give a little explanation?
Well, I don't know. I agree with that.
No, no, we need to hear a little bit more, just because I want to be clear.
We don't have a choice. We need to adopt this. If we don't, it's adopted force. It's much like the ADU laws, right? The state housing laws. So yes, you're required pursuant to statute to adopt this.
Don't they just adopt it anyway? Is that it?
Yep, yep. It's imposed on you.
I don't know, that seems fishy to me. Okay.
So I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you.
If we're ready for that. I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance to designate fire hazard severity zones in local responsibility areas in Fairfax. Oh, wait a minute. Read by title only, and adopt an ordinance to designate fire hazard severity zones in local responsibility areas in Fairfax.
A second.
Councilmember Egger.
Aye.
Councilmember Garen Gully.
No.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes. Okay. So we're going to move on to the regular agenda.
Can I just mention one thing for folks that are listening or in the audience? So I sit on Marin wildfire prevention authority, and I just want to mention, there's a couple of things. You can sign up for chipper days now. We're going to do a lot of pickups, I think six or more in the season. So if you've cleared some defensible space and you want to get that stuff chipped, the other thing that's going to happen, and I think you might be able to get in line now, is we'll be opening the period for defensible space grants as well as home hardening grants. So, and they go really fast, so just something to think about. There's some easy things that you can do in your house for home hardening, like installing those vents. There's other things that are much more expensive, but I would just urge people to take a look, and I'm sure we'll put some of that on our newsletter in the future, but I think we've already had chipper days. But anyway, just something to think about to help, you know, to make sure that you mitigate what you can of what may burn at your house.
And get involved in the firewise community. Okay, so moving along, we're going to move to the regular agenda where we're going to discuss transitioning to a charter city and provide direction to staff. So this is continued from the April 2nd, 2025 Town Council meeting. I'm not sure if staff wants to do a report first or if we want to ask Mr. Egger to give us an update. How would you like to proceed?
Sure. I had, I had emailed our town manager the report from, from down south, from the charter cities, five charter cities. The Asher and Wynder LLP is the attorneys that are representing, that are representing the charter cities in Southern California. They, they actually prevailed in Los Angeles County Superior Court. And, and the Senate Bill Nine was declared unconstitutional as it applied to charter cities by the LA County Superior Court. The second finding by the judge was that the state of California owed those five cities down there $271,343 for fees and costs to cover their, their legal costs down there when they sued the state. Attorney General Bonta has appealed both those decisions, and the first was argued in, in April, and the second was argued, I shouldn't say argued, it was briefed, it was only briefed, it was briefed in, in late April, and the second one was briefed on, on May 5th, Cinco de Mayo day. But it hasn't been argued in court yet. Now, Senator Weiner, who's driving a lot of these housing laws in Sacramento, that's impacting our small towns and cities throughout California, he's, he's, he's now amending every, every law he writes about housing that it includes charter cities. I'm suggesting that Fairfax keep their options open, the possibility of becoming a charter town, and not to sue the state, but to, but to be prepared should Bonta, Attorney General Bonta lose those two appeals. Those charter cities in Southern California aren't going to stop at that one, one litigation. If they prevail at appellate court or even the California Supreme Court, I suspect they're going to, they're going to go after more of these housing issues at that impact charter cities. So if Fairfax is poised to be able to put a charter town issue on a ballot come, come November of 2026, it's a regular town council election, it may bode well for us should charter cities prevail and, and in Southern California through an appeals process. That's all. That, that's what I suggested, is that we keep our options open and continue this process, not spend a lot of money on it, but just continue this process. I have the Superior Court of Law of California, County of Los Angeles, April 22nd, 2024, that was filed down there, and I have the decision, which, which was included in what I had emailed out. But let me just hand out, there's, there's five of these. One, two, three, four, I've got one. So just, I thought that would be in the packet, but it wasn't, but it wasn't, but there, if each council just has one in their own packet, and you, and you can do your own research on charter cities, you could, you could go through this process. I'm in touch with the two lawyers that are representing the charter cities of California, and they're, they haven't given up. Anyway, thank you.
Is there something we need to do special with this with you?
Oh, yes. I've got one, I've got one for staff, too.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Can I?
The public or how does this?
Yes.
We'll. So just a second, we'll, we'll move on. But I just want to make sure that that gets settled, and then we will move on to questions. But before we move on to questions, I, we're going to do a presentation, that's what I'm saying. So if we can have a presentation and then we can ask questions of staff and Mr. Egger, that would be great. So if we could go ahead and have the staff presentation, that would be great.
Okay, thank you very much. Christine is very nice to run the slides for me. So previously, we were asked to do, prepare a discussion about charter cities, and as you recall, we had that ready for the last meeting, and it got late, so it got moved. And so I'll just jump right in. The purpose of the discussion today is really to explore the potential of a charter city. Can you hear me okay? Okay, am I echoing now? Okay. Okay, I'll try to be close, so I'll be loud. So what, what a charter city can and cannot do. And then also, we're looking, um, at the end of this presentation, after you hear the public comment, we're looking for information from you about whether you'd like to direct staff to do more work and that would commit more resources to this effort. So next slide is, um, what is a charter city? So, um, a charter city, basically, the effort will create a document that will make specific rules and laws for how your city works differently from a general law city, which is, um, what we are currently under. And, um, most jurisdictions within California are general law cities. It can give you more, um, control over municipal affairs. Things like elections, taxation. So you'll hear later in the presentation also that all of the recent charter efforts have been in an effort to rectify financial issues that those cities had through a real estate transfer tax. And that's not the same drivers that we heard here. And you can also have different rules about contracting. So for example, all general, um, general law cities need to use prevailing wages when they're doing, um, construction work. And other cities, charters may exclude that or may modify that.
And can you say what a prevailing wage is?
Yes, so prevailing wage is, um, uh, basically what is, um, uh, defined by the state as a fair wage, right? So what's, uh, the prevailing wages for that type of work, for construction work, um, in your area? So, um, typically, unions favor this. Um, Fairfax has a living wage, um, ordinance of its own for, for other things. So I'm guessing that, that is not something that the council would be interested in avoiding is the prevailing wage. But that is another, um, financial consideration that some charter cities want to avoid prevailing wage. I want to also make sure you're aware that even charter cities are still subject to state and federal laws on matters which the state deems of statewide concern. So you hear that a lot in the newer housing laws is that they consider that, the state considers that of statewide concern. And then charter cities cannot get around that. So next slide. We talked about what the charter city goals might be in the strategic planning session that we held, um, about a month ago. And, um, that was important for me to understand. Um, you know, as council members raise, you know, could we be a charter city? What would it take? What could we do with that? I really wanted to understand what were the goals there, you know? Um, we need to know why we're doing this so that we can focus the, um, effort and, uh, control the costs. So what was brought up at the time was the option to directly elect a mayor. Flexibility regarding housing regulations and potential for enhanced revenue. And that would be local taxes. So I just want to, um, talk a little bit, and it's in the staff report. But specifically, um, you may directly elect a mayor without having a charter. But it does, uh, create the need for an election, right? So you need to have an election that, um, says that you can have a directly elected mayor. Um, and then you have an election for the mayor. And you'd have rules about, you know, uh, what that may, how long that mayor would serve and whatnot. But, um, having a directly elected mayor is different from what you may have heard of as a strong mayor, which has powers over and above what the other council members have. And that strong mayor, where they dwarf the other council members' power, would be, um, something that would need a charter. As far as flexibility in housing regulations, um, we've seen over and over again, and this is detailed in, in the staff report. The, the state is on to the idea of charter cities getting out of HCD rules. RENA numbers, HCD is Housing and Community Development, Department of the State of California. And RENA is the, um, regional housing, um, numbers that we must, um, adopt a housing element to allow. And then in terms of potentially enhanced revenue, there is the option, um, if you do a charter, for having a, um, a greater and more specific real estate transfer tax. So we get some benefit right now, um, from the county's activity there. But this would be another potential revenue stream. You could also enact any number of local taxes. So you see, for example, in the city and county of San Francisco, they went for a soda tax and, you know, other things. So there are other options there. But I didn't hear from the, this council that that was, you know, an area they were interested in exploring. So next slide. Again, key benefits, more local control with limitations. Ability to, to establish election rules. So you could, like you see in Santa Fe, they have, um, they have a charter and, um, they have a different election cycle. So.
And they have districts.
Yes. Well, and they're by districts, yeah. So you could have districts. Also, we heard from a, a caller in the, um, unagendized items talking about, um, ranked choice voting. In order to do ranked choi- choi- rank choice voting, sorry, you need a charter and you also need different equipment. So there would be a cost for creating the charter and then also cost for equipment and running an election on your own, which right now, we don't, we don't run elections separately from the county.
And term limits would be inclusive in the election rules?
Custom. You could put, um, term limits in there, yes, absolutely. And, um, you know, that is definitely trending. Okay, and so, uh, I mentioned also different procurement rules. So prevailing wage, that's the, you know, um, the standard that unions generally favor. But if you do not have those prevailing wages in your contracts or you exclude them as part of your charter, it's very likely that the state will no longer fund your projects. So right now, we get, uh, state funding through TAM for road projects. And we would, uh, likely not be eligible for those in the future if we were to do that. And then, of course, I mentioned before, the potential to enact many different types of, uh, local taxes, including the most popular, which is the real estate transfer tax, because it, it can, you know, really save some, um, cities' financial situation. Okay, uh, next slide. So, um, we talked in detail at, uh, in the staff report about the limitations on housing autonomy, if you will, for charter cities. And, um, there were three, actually, we added, um, an additional case based on what, um, uh, Councilmember Agar talked about with the SB 9 cases. So there, there are cities in Southern California that have, um, had some success. And we, um, understand from our, and that's specific to SB 9. And we understand from our specialized attorney that that's only for those cities. And that, um, there has been legislation since then that makes that moot as far as the, the rest of the state. And then I will also just mention SB 9 in particular. What SB 9 did or does is it allows a lot split. So you have to have a lot that would accommodate a split where you could put another house on it. And in many, um, I, I would venture to say most, if not all, lots in Fairfax, that would be impossible or very, very expensive to the point of making it impossible, uh, because of the terrain or the size, um, or the shape of their, um, of their lots. So just context for SB 9 specifically. And then, um, yes, we've, we've seen that, um, charter cities are not excluded from, um, the RENA numbers, those numbers that the state, um, provides to us dictates how many units, new housing units, we need to figure out how to allow, um, in an eight-year housing element cycle. And we saw that throughout the county, right? So, um, there's no city or, um, jurisdiction within the county that was excluded or got out of RENA numbers. Um, that's absolutely not the case. So next slide. Lial and financial considerations. So, um, again, getting back to the, the question of housing autonomy specifically, there is some ambiguity between, um, you know, what, if you were. Specifically, just for, um, doing a process where we would, um, uh, develop a charter, bring it to the council, have it discussed, and then, uh, take it to the people for a vote, is, we would estimate between $50,000 and $100,000. So there's a lot of attorney's fees in there. This needs to be done, uh, so that it can, you know, if it's adopted by the, um, by the voters, that it can withstand challenges. Voter approval is required, so there's some timing aspects, um, of there, of that as well. And we would estimate that this cost, this would take about, um, 18 months. And, um, once you have, once the voters adopt a charter, if you want to make changes to the charter, it's no longer within the council's, um, power. It has to go back out to the, um, the people for a vote. So anytime you want to change that, um, you need to go for a full vote. And it, it, you know, creates that same time and cost, um, issue. So the next slide, um, transition process. And, um, I did reach out to a number of my colleagues who went through charter process. So either the council initiates the process, which is what it looks like we're doing now, or we may be doing, um, or the community can put together a petition for a charter process. And that's pretty involved. You would have public engagement and hearings, of course. We would have to draft a charter. And it's a, you know, substantial and detailed document. And it would need, um, a lot of legal review. There would be a ballot measure and then, um, there would be implementation. So just to sort of give you a sense of where, um, we're potentially going with this. So of course, this project involves, um, community meetings, numerous meetings, uh, materials being created and, um, engagement with all of the stakeholders. Want to go to the next, I think, one more. So since the last time we had this in the packet, I, um, I added some information about other charter attempts. So, uh, I guess it's a couple of years ago now, Belvedere attempted, um, to have a charter. Again, specifically, they were looking at doing, um, transfer tax, real estate transfer tax, and that was the only thing they were looking at. So they were really focused on that, not looking at a much broader, um, sort of, uh, charter that we are, uh, talking about.
When you say that, you said that that was the only element or component to the charter? Was this, was the transfer tax?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. Thank you for clarifying. So, um, they felt they, they kept their costs pretty low because it was so specific. And, um, they paid about $30,000. So in this last election cycle, um, November, uh, 2024, St. Helena and Benicia went for, um, charter cities. Both of them, again, extremely focused on just getting that real estate transfer tax. A very, very clear about that was all they were doing. St. Helena spent about $80,000. And, uh, Benicia spent about $50,000. So that gives you, you know, a sense of some of our, our neighbors. And, um, again, just want to reiterate, they were laser focused on real estate transfer tax. And what we're talking about is a potentially much greater effort. So, uh, financial impact, that's how we came up with the $50,000 to $100,000. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Somehow I thought she would just see me, uh, pointing my finger. And then last slide.
Can I just mention, I think that's low, um, when you look at that. Just because, you know, when we got the estimate of what it would be to run an election a few months ago, it was $60,000. Okay, so July 1, mail costs go up significantly. And I think what, what has been envisioned here is different than just real estate transfer tax, which is, you can see, one spent $80,000. St. Helena is not very big. And so I think the election would be much more than $60,000 just because mail costs go up. And then, you know, whatever attorney's review of a more extensive charter, I think it'd be higher, like, starting at $100,000. So just my input.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't be surprised if it was more than $100,000, certainly based on what we've seen. I guess I'll just.
Are we doing questions now?
Okay, sorry. Are you going to be?
I'll save my questions.
Okay, are you, are you, Calista finished? Are you finished or?
I have just one more slide.
Okay.
Yeah. And here it is. Christine's going to press the button to, oh, you are. Okay.
Sorry.
I can't see behind me. So again, back to what we're doing here today. Um, we want you to discuss the information that we provided and then, um, provide direction on whether you want us to take, um, additional steps which require additional resources to be able to, um, analyze this further and bring you other steps. We need to know, because this is, you know, part of how we make sure that we are using the public's time and money appropriately, is that you give us direction here at a council meeting where everyone, you know, can see it. And we're, we're getting that you're all on the same page or not. So appreciate your time there.
Okay, so we'll do questions and then we'll move on to public comment and then back to deliberation. And Councilmember Hellman, you had questions?
Yeah, um, just, I, I just wanted to kind of throw out the thought that related to cost and sizing the effort, you could use a, an, another charter as a model, not unlike we use model ordinances from other jurisdictions, right? So that could be a starting point, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'll answer and say, yes, you could. But if the point of, um, this process is to make it specific, very specific to Fairfax, then my guess is that there's a lot of effort to get it from model to specific. And, um, a lot of that. And a lot of that comes in, sorry, Janet, attorney's fees. And the the information about, you know, Weiner getting wise to this and making all the the go forward housing policies are now not exempting charter cities. But so how does that work for the ones on the books? So it looks like SB nine has been challenged, and now it's being appealed, right, by by Bonta? But what about some of the others, i.e. 330? Have those not been challenged?
No, there was a very specific issue with SB nine, and it had to do with the use of the word affordable. And for a number of years, all of the housing laws have been specifically saying that they apply to both charter and general law cities. And SB nine, the fix was SB 450, I think it was. And it, the court hung up on the use of the word affordable. And and so they fixed that in SB 450. And so now it reads to where it's increased the stock of housing, not just affordable housing. There is a blurb in the staff report that discusses that. It pretty much moots that case.
Okay, but I think I'm just going to name it. So I think there's a lot of members of the communities that are really frustrated and upset about the bonus density, right, specifically around School Street, right? So if, how would that come into play? How how would, should we, you know, adopt it? Put a charter city on the ballot? It passes within 18 months. I don't see how that timing could work out as a potential.
Basically, the bottom line is if you want to do a charter, you shouldn't think that you're going to get out of the housing laws by doing a charter, because you're not. That's the bottom line.
Guess I'll. Even if the ones that are on the books now don't exclude charter cities?
They've been doing this for a number of years, and they they have both. They have statements that they both, they apply to both charter and general law cities.
Does SB 330?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have something to say.
Jessica, so this is time for questions, and you want to, I see you and you. So let's go to Mr. Gary and Gully first, and then.
Okay. There'll be a question at the end. First of all, I like the idea of more local control. And this is a good exercise, this this entire meeting, starting off with people flabbergasted by lack of control of their future in this town. And they talked about local control, and how do we stop monster building projects? And of course, this type of the the law we're talking about here for charter cities is 18 months away if we ever did it. So the real question is, what what does the public? It's not a question, but the public who spoke tonight said they want us, they want them, they want the town to come together and push back and oppose the lack of local control in our town. Which, by the way, the only thing I can see that happening is the vote. The people that are doing this to us, which is the elected officials in Sacramento, if you don't vote them out of office, this is such an authoritarian state. And we're living it right now. The, so basically, the state's gone too far. If we don't do something, if the folks out here in this audience, because here at the council, we have rules and regulations we have to follow decorum. But if the people in the audience and people in our town want to fight back, I have a question, don't worry. We have lost control of our town by bowing to the state. They've they've lost control. It's nothing that we're doing up here, okay? Can we push back? You tell us what to do, we'll do it. If the people rise up, the state says they will take control of our town. And we will have, they'll take our town, they'll take our money, they'll fine us. I say we already don't have local control, they've already taken control of our town. So my question is, what can we do to get local control right now? And plan maybe for Frank's idea for a charter city going forward, which I think is a good idea. But right now, what are we going to do? Because right now is the problem, lack of local control. What are we going to do? That's my question.
Well, I'll I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to the attorney. I think you mentioned, you know, that these housing laws that are so upsetting are coming from the state. And we all, everyone in this room who lives in California has a vote in the state. And so that's that's one way. There's also, you know, writing to your representatives, letting them know your your concerns, your feelings. That that's part of the tension here, right? Is that the town for these housing laws is required to comply? And it's can be very, very difficult, if not impossible, to not comply. We don't, you know, we talked about as we were doing the housing element, some of the potential ramifications for not adopting a housing element that was in compliance would be the state taking over our ability to approve any projects at all.
The the state would take over our town if we don't let them take over our town?
They could put you in receivership and take over.
In my mind, they've already done it.
Okay. And did, was there further answer from Jessica? Because I think that we were going to hear from the town attorney, or is that not necessary at this point?
The only thing I have to say, and I tend to be pretty blunt about this, is it's been, it's been going on for years. And the only way to change the state housing laws is to change the state legislature. So your recourse, excuse me, is not to go to be a charter city. Your recourse is at the ballot box for your state legislatures. That's just very simple fact.
Okay, Councilmember Collet?
Yeah, I I have a brief comment and and then a question specific to this. It's that is, it's not just Senator Weiner. There are many, many legislators, and there are many housing bills every year. And so this is the train that left the station. But I would just say, a question I have, density bonuses, waivers, and incentives have been in state law for many years, predating all of these new housing laws. So my question is, do those laws, and we had a presentation many years ago, I was the only one on the council that's still here. Do they apply to charter cities as well as general law cities? I think they do.
I believe they do, yes.
So, okay, so that's, you know, you got a whole lot of people to vote out and people who were there before. Okay, thank you.
Okay, other people who want, okay, Mr. Gary?
On the issue of a cost for an election, you mentioned up to $100,000. It would be at the time of a regular town council election. So there wouldn't be any special costs other than whatever the county charges, say for for Measure I or Measure H that we put in a ballot, that'd be the same charge for going for for having a charter town issue on that ballot. It's not a special election, it's just a regular town council election, one more measure. We had three measures on on November election. So this would be, if we were running a town council election, November 26, we'd add one more measure. It's interesting, everyone goes, well, the state legislature did this to us. So we have to understand that these extreme housing laws were written for state legislators, Scott like Scott Weiner and Buffy Wicks, by industry lobbyists. They just didn't go out and dream up this measured impact.
Questions, but yes.
General law cities or charter cities. Lobbyists wrote these this legislation. And and when you look at their, if you look at their contribution lists, they're bought and paid for by the industry. So, you know, livable California is going to try to run another initiative to take back local control. These discussions are going on regularly. And and one of these days, they might kick off another initiative to try to qualify it on the ballot. But, you know, just positioning ourselves to potentially become a charter town might be enough to to have us in a position that should these charter cities, and this is, this is not just one lawsuit, there're going to be, there're going to be multiple lawsuits coming from these charter cities. And should they be able to overturn some of these state housing laws? And if we're positioned properly or readily, we might be able to take advantage of what of what they're doing down there. We wouldn't have to be spending money suing anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, and these are all good points. I'm going to reiterate that we're doing the doing questions of staff, and then we will be having more deliberation after we hear from the public. So I wanted to check if there were more questions, otherwise I'll ask questions. Okay, so first off, does anybody know what happened with Sausalito, which did start a charter city process and then dropped it, as far as I know?
I I did talk to Sausalito. I don't know that it's dropped, but it's very much nascent, so not sure when. It might come back to the council. And so they started along that process. They had a a presentation from one of their attorneys and then said, you know, we're sort of tabling this for now, it may come back later. That's my understanding of where they are.
What was the focus of their charter city? Did they have a particular focus?
I believe that was also real estate transfer tax, because they they have a very different financial situation from Fairfax, and they need to rectify that.
Okay, so the second question, I guess we've already answered. So regardless of whether we move to a charter city, like, right now, I mean, you know, we'd have to give it 12 to 18 months. It would not, even if, so say a School Street Plaza is not constructed yet, right? Would moving to a charter city have any impact on School Street Plaza?
Well, so School Street Plaza developers submitted that preliminary application. The only purpose, as I understand it, of submitting that applic, that preliminary application, which doesn't give us much information, was to put a stake in that date so that the town cannot update its rules and change the game for them.
So adopting a charter city to try to circumvent, I'm not talking about School Street Plaza now, but circumvent state housing laws around any other opportunity sites in town would be a bit of a gamble, right? Because it sounds like, it doesn't sound like there's any intention.
I would call that more than a bit of a gamble. There's no, there's no evidence that a charter city would allow you to get out of the housing laws that we find onerous.
Okay, and then I just.
There's only two two votes for a charter city in Sausalito, that's the problem. It's a three to two vote against going forward.
Okay, so so that's 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 an interesting one, because, you know, we've, some of us have talked to council members down there. So in terms of the real property parcel tax, you know, I think that most people are pretty taxilary right now. Roads and whether a bond and a parcel tax. How much could we possibly leverage off of a parcel tax to make it even worth having that on the agenda for a charter city?
I mean, I I haven't, you know, run numbers on what you would need to do in terms of a real estate transfer tax in order to get enough money for roads. But I would say, you know, keep in mind that the need for roads is in the millions per year. And my, just my intuition is that that the amount of turnover in our real estate in Fairfax is low compared to the rest of the county, very low compared to the rest of the county. And so the likelihood that we would be able to realize that kind of gain gives me pause.
Thank you. And then there are different paths to getting to a charter city. So it sounds like the council could write the charter, or we could elect a charter committee. And I am unclear if we decided to elect a charter committee. I'm going to assume that's a group of residents. I'm not sure if that would include any council members. But is that a special election or a general election that elects the charter committee? Like, how do we get the charter committee if that's the path we choose?
It is elected, people would have to run for it. And the major thing you should realize about an elected charter commission is that they draft the charter, and it doesn't come back to the council, and the council has no say over that charter. Those elected people on that charter commission are the ones who have the final say over that charter of what goes before the people for a vote.
Right, so if we wanted to go that route, and we decided we were going to go ahead to the charter city, and we wanted to do an elected group, we would have to get an election going pretty quick to get them in there on time to set it up for a November 2026 election.
I, yeah, I have spoken with the elections attorney at Best Western Krieger, and I would have to ask him if that could be a special election or it has to be at a regular election. I know the vote on the charter itself needs to be at a regular municipal election.
Okay, I think that is all my questions. So I think unless anybody else has another question.
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Related to taxation, can you change the the two thirds to a majority?
I don't believe so, but I'll have to check on that for you.
Okay.
Okay, great. So I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment, and everybody gets two minutes. And if anybody would like to approach the podium, please do so now.
Chris Kenton, Cascade. Honestly, this just sounds like a boondoggle to me. I mean, this sounds like an incredible waste of time when we're talking about all the things that this town has to face. This is, you know, the costs that you're talking about are literally the ante to get into a very expensive game, getting into lawsuits against the state. The five municipalities that you're talking about under SB nine that the state said that the law was unconstitutional, that was for one narrow aspect of all of these housing mandates. And another law was already passed to close that loop. So if you're saying that the only reason why we're organizing this charter city is to try to stand up to the state, you're telling me that we're following the same obstructionist policies that we've been following for the last 40 years that have led us to exactly where we are right now. Mike, when you say, you know, people want to stand up, what we want to see you do is to start working together in order to organize an intelligent response to what the state is pushing down on us. And I would encourage you to look up the Dillon Rule, because it it sounds like you think that the city related to the state is like the state related to the federal government, and we're not. We're not sovereign.
I never said that.
No, but what you're saying is that we should fight the state.
I never said that.
Just let him finish, it's time to speak.
He can talk to you, but you can't respond, so.
So Frank, you said something really interesting. You said that the reason why Sausalito didn't pass is because they only had two votes. And that really brings up the question in my mind if that's what the recall is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Yeah, I just want to specify concerning what Edgar was saying earlier. Like, I would consider myself in the Noam Chomsky category. When I think of Scott Weiner and and like, for example, SB 1037, or they don't really specify, for example, like, what development they're talking about it. And it's just that they would have punitive expeditions against towns and cities that would try to block development. I just feel like if this is some Weiner scheme, I think that really, honestly, in my mind, I think it's just repackaging neoliberalism to make it look like progressive or non-regressive values. Really, honestly, I think there's a big attempt to try to repackage neoliberalism as as some form of public good or something like this. I just don't, I'm not, I don't buy it. Honestly, I just don't.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Steve Anderson, Fairfax Manor. The one thing that sounds good to me about the discussion about the charter city is the possibility of ranked choice voting. the possibility of ranked choice voting. I think there's a lot of benefit to that. Obviously, the, the hope that maybe it might help with our HNA seems, you know, very far-fetched and, and doesn't seem worthwhile for the expense or the other upset we would get out of it. And I think the, the method we have for raising funds for the town already is one that people can participate in, and I think that's a good one. And I don't think we should change that.
Thank you. Next, please.
Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. Have any of you, have any of the members of the public ever gone to a site called followthemoney.org? It's quite revealing. The government official that you seem to be taking your marching orders from or not questioning adequately has received $8,148,151 donated to him in three different races. His name is Scott Wiener. Approximately 1 million of that came from the real estate industry. He's only been in office since 2016, but you don't question his motives? I find that really hard to believe, that if you are elected to represent Fairfax, if three of you in your council members' meeting activity reports or activity reports have gone to the Marin Council of Mayors, where they have as policy in their legislative committee to pursue local control and oppose state mandates on housing, or something to that effect, but to maintain local control. I find it really funny that you're willing to roll over and give Fairfax to Scott Wiener. Next, one of the benefits, potential benefits that would be voted on, I'm encouraging, just in case I run out of time, I'm encouraging you to put this on the ballot when other people get to vote on other things at a minimal cost, so that controversial matters such as this get decided upon by all of the Fairfax voters rather than the five of you. One of the things is that you can have a strong mayor. Well, it seems that Mayor Lise Oblash has already done that in an authoritarian way, because she has gone ahead and changed the format of the meeting minutes, or, sorry, of the consent calendar. So it's now no longer numbered. We have 16 items on the consent calendar this time, but they're very hard to read. It's a violation of disability things. That was not voted on.
I think you're done now, so thank you. Next, please.
You know, I was just thinking about the options ahead of you tonight, and maybe one of the reasons that you might make a decision now to progress forward in a few months, or tonight, or when that might be. But the thought that I had was this, you know, and I get to say this from my side, rather than from your side, because you have state mandates that say that you can't make ordinances that change the state housing mandates to the sites list, et cetera. But, but I can say that one of the reasons that you're looking at being a charter city is to change the housing laws, to downzone those sites which have been mandated to you to be upzoned, and regain that local control, right? So among the other options that the town manager has put forth as benefits or negatives to those decisions to become a charter or not. But the general law city says you can't create these, and will penalize you if you create these types of laws that interfere with the housing laws. So that's the decision that you have tonight, that if I were in your position, that I would have. And it really comes down to, you know, and Frank, you may have been right early on. You may, we may have had a chance to become a charter city, but I'm not for the charter city in any one of our local jurisdictions or agencies. But there may have been a chance. I think that window has closed, and, or may be closing very quickly. But I applaud you for doing your research and knowing, and really talking to the town through all these years, and, and knowing what you're talking about, and doing the research for down south as well. So thank you for that. But that's all I have to say. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
There are five raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, great. Let's go to Zoom.
The first caller is Chad, followed by Pam. Chad, you may unmute yourself.
I want to cite that, or state that it seems kind of hypocritical, that, you know, the two newest members of the council ran on what they thought was inefficient use of public funds by the previous council, and now are proposing, you know, these efforts that I think are going to be very expensive for us. They're talking about suing the state. And that is just an inefficient use of our funds. We're, they, they think we're cash strapped, yet they want to get involved in massive legal battles. This is not what our town needs. We need roads and schools. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
The next speaker is Pam, followed by PJ. Pam, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening. Pam Meggs, 310 Cypress Drive, Fairfax, since 1987. Couple of things I just sort of noticed on the, well, first I want to say that 58% of Californians currently reside in a charter city. So it's not just like a small amount. So that tells me right there that something must be okay. As far as Heather's report, I was really looking for some wins. I wanted to hear what was some positive charter cities, what they have done. And all I felt like I got was the, the negatives. So that, to me, really needs to be spelled out. And also, attorneys, specialty attorneys that possibly could help with this, would, could be another factor involved. So tonight, you know, for two hours, people are asking the council, they are telling you what they want. They want you to fix school street. This could possibly be an option. I always look under the rock a little bit more when somebody tells me no. So I would really ask that you listen to the people, and let's try and help the town and give them what they want. Thank you.
Next, please.
The next speaker is PJ, followed by Cindy. PJ, you may unmute yourself.
Hey, thank you. PJ, just speaking solely on my own behalf. I, I agree that this is likely a project where we're just spending money for little to no benefit, given what everyone has identified as this state's prerogative to preempt and usurp whatever local control the town wants to keep for itself, either as a charter city or as a general law city. The state can just continue to pass new laws, and that's where. Fervor for, for how authoritarian the state can be and how much control. But I think the real issue is what Councilmember Egger pointed out, in that the government is largely bought and paid for, as are our elections. There's currently a push to pass a Senate bill to promote and try and get more public funding of elections and keep outside money out of elections. I was just placing the suspense file, another, in my opinion, cynical use of suspense, the state's appropriations committee's suspense files. But ultimately, we're not going to have change until we get our elected officials at the state level not to be acting generally in the interests of campaign contributors, like another speaker mentioned, the real estate lobby, the people who have funded a lot of the reactionary campaigns recently in Fairfax, or those same ones funding the legislature at the state level to take control and really force down whatever pet projects they have onto Fairfax.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The next speaker is Cindy. Cindy, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, Cindy Ross again. And, you know, as I'm listening tonight, I'm actually more confused now than I was at the beginning of this meeting. And I'm wondering if somebody could very specifically tell me, maybe, maybe Councilmember Egger could say specifically, why exactly would we be looking at, at becoming a charter town? Very specifically, what does that mean? What are we trying to do? Because when I hear, you know, school street and, or, or things like that, yeah, I'm absolutely against it. Like Councilmember Gerengelli said, I, I want to know, aside from that, what are we going to do now? But I, but I also feel like then when I hear in the presentation, you know, we're talking about towns that, you know, were voted, the, the, the members voted it down because of property transfer taxes, I'm thinking, wait a minute, I'm a homeowner here. I'd like to be able to stay here in Fairfax and live peacefully and happily and, and, you know, not be forced out of Fairfax. But it, it almost sounds like it's saying, so does that mean if I do move, I'm going to have to pay a tax, you know, to, to sell my house? So that the, like, I just don't understand where this is going and what it's going to actually do, either with school street or, or anything else right now. So if somebody could just please clarify that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay. So we're going to draw this back to deliberation. So who wants to go first? Okay. Caller.
So I, you know, I think when this came up at the retreat, it was a much broader idea than just a real estate transfer tax, which were the examples you gave. And I think Councilmember Egger brings up a point, if it was a, a regular election, you would be spending not so much on the election, but you would still be spending quite a bit on attorney's fees. I think one of the things I heard from somebody that spoke was, like to hear, like, why a charter city is a good thing. And since each charter city's charter is different, it's kind of hard to point that out. I, I think I would ask San Rafael, what did they get out of that? You know, but they've had that for many, many years, probably back in the day when Frank was around, he might understand more about that. I also heard someone say, didn't sound like he was supportive of the concept, but liked the idea of ranked choice voting, but I also heard you say, you would have to run your own election. Okay, we couldn't do that. That would be incredibly expensive, and I don't even know how we would start that. But I think we have a lot on our plate, and I don't see this as a good use of staff resources or attorney resources to start digging into something, even if it was the idea of let, you know, folks run for election, and then they write this charter that we would have no control over. That's sort of troubling. But I think there's also the option of the council writing it, or appointing an ad hoc group to write it. Again, it's just, to me, I'm relatively smart, and I don't think I would know even how to start that. I think Vice Mayor Helman pointed out, you could start from somebody else's. That's probably true. But I still think we'd be looking at months and months of work on this, and with a lot of outreach, I sort of see it taking much longer than 18 months. And, and I think Ms. Ross just pointed out, what do we get out of this? I didn't see a huge benefit, except potentially, maybe in the future, somebody will shoot down the fact that these housing laws, they say, are a matter of statewide control. But I think that would be pieces. And I don't, so for me, it's not a thing. And one of the things I heard from another member of the audience was, I do sit on the Mayor's and Councilmembers Legislative Committee, and I am the vice chair. In that group, we send in letters to the various committees that are taking up housing bills and other bills that are within our mission. And we oppose things that oppose local control. It's not just a letter. We have Cal City's lobbyists that lobby those bills. But this is not something that you do by the sweep of a pen or, and I think that member of the audience, what are we doing here? Yeah, we, we've sent some letters. I brought some of those letters to us. But it's, you know, it's going like the myth of Sisyphus, right? It's very difficult. There's a huge push, there's to continue these housing laws. I mean, every time we start a legislative session, they come to us, talking to us about the number of housing bills. It's truly astounding how many there are. Like, it's, and I, I have not gone to that website, but I'm sure many of these are written by lobbyists. I worked in the Capitol for many years, and lobbyists had a lot of sway, and they wrote a lot of those bills. But I'm sure not everyone is bought and paid for by the real estate industry, but it kind of doesn't matter, because they wield the power. So I sort of look at this as, we have a lot on our plate. I am not supportive of positioning ourselves for a charter city. I think with Councilmember Egger's help, our attorney's help, we can keep watch on this litigation as it goes forward. This one doesn't sound like, even though it will be appealed, it only affects those charter cities that won something, and it doesn't affect other charter cities. So I think we ought to really buckle down and try to do the work of this council and do what we can. And I'd rather not spend a lot of money on drafting a charter and redirecting staff to work on a charter. I just, I just don't think that gets us anywhere, and we've had so many diversions over the last few years. I'd like us to figure out if there's some way we can fix what we can of roads and get back to some of the basics. So that's my two cents, and thank you.
Other comments? Okay, Mr. Councilmember Gerengelli.
Okay. So the consideration of, of a charter city, Frank brought up, the thing that popped out in my eyes, mind, was the greater local control part of it. No matter what form of government we do, the one we are currently doing right now, or if we decide to try things differently down the road, we still have a local control problem. I mean, recently, at the last election, we had additional rent control thrust upon our community. At first, without a vote, and then it went to a vote. Led by Frank Egger and many people back in the day, we took 65 years to write zoning laws in Fairfax that kept Fairfax a charming small town, kept your hills pristine, kept your views nice, did a lot of nice things to keep Fairfax, Fairfax. And in just a few short years, the entire town has been rezoned, and we now have a paved path for seven-story buildings, not just the one you're in uproar tonight about, which I agree with you. Monster projects are, have the, we have the ability to have many more of these in our town. It's, it's a David versus Goliath situation. It's Fairfax versus the state of California. And so I'm all for greater local control, whether it's through a charter city, or we get the people behind us. If you're really against something, what do they say? Stand up and be counted? And so whichever pathway we go down, I'd like to explore it a little bit longer, by the way, in terms of a charter city. I don't think this, this here, I think this was kind of a slanted negative. I don't think this, this here, I think this was kind of a slanted negative presentation, as pointed out by one of the speakers. But anyway, that's what I would do. I would look into this a little bit longer, see, you know, study it a little bit longer. But more importantly than that, we have to, speaking of coming together, Chris, are you out there? There you are. As far as coming together goes, yeah, I'm happy to see it because I actually ran on this. I ran against rent control. I ran against monster buildings. Not any specific one. Of course, there was only one up. But guess what? I meant, I was in debates about this. I was on your side, actually, as it turns out. So, yeah, stand up and be counted, Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I don't have much to add, but I just wanted to identify that the key benefits are listed on page six. And I do find this to be a pretty robust staff report. So thank you for your time and effort on this. And, yeah, I was, I voted to support this exploration because I am curious and supportive of a number of things that you could do as a charter city. But what I heard in response to my questions related to, would this be an opportunity for us to combat or circumvent any of the housing laws? I didn't hear the answer that would lead me to support this. So not right now, anyway. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Kind of an interesting dilemma for our town. You know, if Fairfax throws in the towel on School Street Plaza, six more are going to follow. Six more sites will be for the town with applications for high-rise housing towers. They were approved when the town, a previous town council voted to select seven workforce housing opportunity sites. I remember coming to the meeting and testifying against the town doing that. I says, you're going to lose control. You don't have to do that. If you want one site, pick one site. Don't pick seven. I would say, you know, your staff, your town attorney or town manager said, oh, no, no, we don't, don't study a town. Town become a charter city, too expensive, et cetera. What's interesting, up in, up in Sonoma County, our, our, our Fairfax's consultant, Dian Bocca, shared a redevelopment plan for the Sonoma Developmental Center up there. And they also prepared their own environmental impact report for that project. And it was thrown out by a Sonoma County judge. Today, in the Santa Rosa Press Democrat, there's a huge story about it's going to cost somebody, either the state or the county of Sonoma, $900,000 to start over again because they really messed up with the environmental impact report they adopted. The article is just starting, if you check today's Press Democrat, I can probably find it in Senate to Christine, and she could forward it to you, so you can read about it up there, how Dian Bocca's plan fared in Glen Ellyn. But anyway, I'd like to see us just continue this item. I could bring in an attorney who represents charter cities that may tell you just the opposite of what your staff told you tonight. You know, I wasn't trying to do that. I was just trying to get the issue before and discuss it a bit. But there's two sides of this story, and you only heard the one side from your staff. But I would just suggest we continue the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to make a few comments, and then I think we're going to discuss about what we're going to do. So, you know, I thought really hard about this because, you know, I try to look at the pros and cons of everything. So some of the pros that I could think of would be like, you know, be kind of an interesting community discussion of our goals and our self-definition, right? And there may be other ways we could do that besides moving to a charter city. But I did like that aspect of it, that it would, you know, get people to be really talking about their goals. Another pro, which, you know, I'm sure people aren't going to love, but, you know, we have had this long discussion about how road bonds. And granted, levying a parcel tax would not fix that because it wouldn't be enough money, but it would be a lot easier to do with less interest than a road bond because a road bond, you know, incurs a lot of interest. I liked the idea of maybe moving to a more equitable and representative voting system. And, you know, I did work in San Francisco on the Electoral Form Coalition that did push for both districts and rent control. There are pros and cons to that, but I don't think it's a system that we could easily adopt here. So I'm just going to give up on that one. And it would have to be heavily discussed by people in Fairfax before they adopted it. So that seemed like a good thing. It's probably not worthwhile. Some of the cons that I've seen after reading a bunch about this is, first off, you know, seems like there's some issues with councils. Maybe this is not correct, but I read a lot about several charter cities in Southern California going bankrupt, having corruption issues just because they did have more control, so a little worried about that. Concerned about the huge cost of time and energy on the part of our staff. I, you know, feel like we're already going through a lot right now. It's possible that, you know, we're going to have a very, a great deal of instability on the council in the next six to eight months. So, you know, it might be something you want to think about when you're trying to take on a huge issue like this, that we already have so much instability. Is this something we also want to jump on? And let's see. The, I've heard that there's a lot of cost-defending charter cities because of some of the issues where there's ambiguity about what you have local control over, so that concerns me. And just that we are, have been told repeatedly that people want us to be very careful about fiscal management. And I feel like we already have a lot of unbudgeted expenses. So, you know, we're going to court again and again about the homeless issue. We are potentially going to incur a lot of money for a special election. We're going to incur money possibly for trying to take this charter cities thing forward in legal costs. And people have told us they don't want more legal costs. So it's kind of confusing to know which way to turn because some people also like the idea of charter cities. Wanted to say one thing that, and then the thing I really don't like is that it makes it so hard to change your rules in your city. Like, you have to take it back to the ballot, which we've seen being very difficult with, like, say, people wanting to change the zoning on MTCC. And it's, you know, fixed with a ballot initiative. So, you know, there's both pros and cons. Did want to mention that a lot of people are saying things like they want to have strategies or they want to know what people's opinions are on School Street Plaza. And we actually cannot say that for various legal reasons. So our silence on that doesn't indicate one opinion or another. It just means that we legally are supposed to keep an open mind and not make a comment on how we feel about that. I have a member of the public who thinks that I should recuse myself. I'm like, gosh, I wish I could. It'd be so great. But I just wanted to also mention and clear the record. I work for UC San Francisco. I've worked there for more than 15 years. So not working for MAC right now.
And didn't you quit your little part-time gig with MAC before you got on the council, right?
Yeah, I quit well before I got on the council, and it was like eight hours a week. So let's see. The final thing is just that, you know, 25% of cities, I think, are charter cities. And when somebody's saying that 58% of the population of California is in a charter city, that's because they're big cities, for the most part. Not all of them, but a lot of them are really big cities. So, you know, it does seem to be something that's sometimes frequently, but not always adopted by communities that are larger than ours. So I just wanted to put that out there. And so I guess one of the things that, you know, we're supposed to give direction to council. And I have some people saying they're not sure they really want to move forward at all. There are people who definitely want to move forward. Is there any sort of middle ground where we could, you know, hold an additional forum or a workshop outside of a town council meeting or something that would satisfy the desire to get this more before the public or discuss further?
Can we, as Councilmember Egger suggested, can we just continue it to an indefinite date?
Yes, you could continue the item to a date uncertain. And, you know, you could also consider, as you mentioned, a public workshop, which would be very much like this discussion, is what I would imagine.
I like the idea of continuing it to a date uncertain. I think that's, Councilmember Egger talked about continuing it. I don't think we should have a date certain at this point. And so to me, that seems like the best course of action.
Now, here's the problem with that, Councilmember Kohler. It takes three votes these days to put any item on the agenda. So continuing it to a date, an uncertain date, is a death knell of it. It's over. There's no way then, you know, three votes are going to put it back on the agenda. We can't get three votes to put anything on the agenda around here. This is the first item I've had on.
It's on the agenda!
It's taken me six months to get one item on the agenda. Not bad, huh?
Just going to clarify that this item is on the agenda because it got three votes. So it's not like, and I'm, there have been a number of items on the agenda that...
Can I make a motion?
You can certainly make a motion.
Okay. I make a motion to continue this meeting to our first meeting in June.
How about July?
How about July? That's fine.
Sorry, Councilmember Gerengeli.
If it's July, I would second that motion.
I agree with Frank because it's his item.
Let's give us some time. It's July.
July's good.
Can you restate your motion to continuing the item instead of the meeting?
I'd like to continue the, I'm sorry. I'd like to continue the item to the first meeting in July.
I'll second that.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question before I vote? So you want to get more information about this appeal?
I'd, I'd, I'd bring on, I'd bring you, probably through Zoom, a lawyer that represents a charter city, and you get a different view about opportunities for charter cities. That's all.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Sorry, may I ask? I'm an administrator, so I have to ask this question. If you're envisioning bringing in an attorney who is not contracted with us, I'm assuming there's no payment in...
If, in fact, funds are necessary, I'll fund it myself personally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I mean, I'd be willing to hear. I don't want to have another three-hour agenda item on this because you have so much work to do. But I'd be very open to listening to, you know, another attorney who has experience with this. I don't know that it needs to be July, though, so...
Can I, I sense Janet has something to say, but I just want to also mention that if, if there is a outside volunteer attorney or whatnot, I just want to make sure it's clear that they can't advise the council. They can, you know, you can get information, but, you know, there's a certain contracting requirement.
Well, maybe it's time to find another town attorney then, huh?
No.
It would be the same.
That's totally rude. I just want to say something.
It's just Frank.
I think July, you know, I'm going to vote no if we stay with July. We've been sitting here for a long time on this. I, if, if you want to continue it, I would continue it to September or October. And I would consider voting yes, but I am voting no if it's July. That's ridiculous. We've got a lot on our plate.
So should I go to a, can I go counter motion or amendment or friendly amendment?
We have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, well, no, done, if you're taking my vote. No.
Yeah. Councilmember Egger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerengeli.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
No.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
No.
Mayor Blash.
You're voting on July.
And does that preclude us having an alternative motion at this point?
Well, that's what I wanted to do, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to vote no for that, but I have other ideas.
Yeah, so alternative motion. I don't even have the item up. Sorry. To continue this item to October this year.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Egger.
Well, let's, can we talk to, speak to the motion? There's a new motion on the floor. I'm not sure how far along the process on our housing element or whatever we're doing is going to be in come October. I mean, it's, if we start talking about it in October, would we possibly be able to get something on a ballot in November of 2026? That's getting pretty close. That's pretty tight. I think we ought to stick with July. And if it doesn't go, it doesn't go. Put it to bed, and it's over. Move on.
What's the reason to move it to October specifically?
We've already spent hours on this. I don't think we're at any sort of time. I'm tired of diverting staff from the real work of the town. So I think moving it to October makes a heck of a lot of sense. Maybe there will be more information from these lawsuits. We've got other things on our plate, Mike.
When we have things to do in October?
Yeah, but we've got a lot coming up. You know, I'm not going to argue with you. I got a motion on the table. Vice Mayor Hellman seconded. Let's take a oral call vote.
Councilmember Egger.
No.
Councilmember Gerengeli.
I'd like to make a motion after my no vote.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
This is for October.
This is for October.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
I wish there was some way we could split the difference here, so maybe I will. I'm going to say no because I want to split the difference.
You make the motion.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion for September. And I'm also just going to reiterate here that we have heard that this would have no impact on our housing element. So this rush is strange. But I would go for September. And if anybody wants to second that, fine, otherwise I'll drop.
I'll second.
Councilmember Egger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerengeli.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Okay. Okay, can we have a bio break for like maybe five minutes here? Thank you for that prompt. We'll be back here at about 9:45. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. Okay, so I'm going to bring it back. And we are going to, I think, first discuss the 10 o'clock rule.
I would like to make, it's a little early, but I'd like to make a motion to waive the 10 o'clock rule.
Second.
Councilmember Egger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerengeli.
Aye.
You didn't, you didn't have anything.
It's okay, I think there.
It's recorded.
Oh, aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes. Okay, so I'm going to just start it, and then we'll go. So the next item would be to conduct a public review of fiscal year 2025, '26 proposed operating and capital improvement budget and provide direction to staff.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. And that motion would be to continue the budget until the June 4 meeting. I think it's kind of late, and there's probably a lot of discussion. So I'd like to make that motion to continue it to June 4.
Do we have a sec, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Egger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerengeli.
No.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes.
And thank you, Finance Director Viverett. Really appreciate you coming and working so hard on the budget.
Out of respect for Michael, I said, no, I want to hear it now. He's here.
Wow.
I lost. Okay, move on.
The coalition of Michaels. So we are going to, so we're going to continue that to the June meeting, is that correct? Okay.
So make sure. Fourth meeting.
In fourth meeting. Thank you. All right. So then moving on, we're going to discuss and consider transitioning to action minutes. And so I think we're going to go ahead with a staff report.
I, I will start off. So this item was brought up by council and it's important, I just want to remind everyone that there is already a resolution by council saying that the, the town provides summary action minutes for, for the council meetings. And right now, what you are seeing is a, is a longer version of that. It's very cost and time intensive and it has still managed to produce quite a bit of controversy. So the idea behind action minutes is something that all of the Marin jurisdictions, with the exception of Fairfax and Ross, do. So all other Marin jurisdictions have action minutes, just recording the actions that the council took, the votes, not the comments, not the public comments. There's a very good reason for that because it is factual. There's no opportunity to say, oh, I said it a little differently. And it is costing us about $15,000 a year to have a minutes clerk who produces those minutes that we currently have. And then the deputy clerk goes through them and tries to make sure that the names are spelled correctly, that it's conveying, you know, the information according to clerk standards throughout the county or throughout the state. And, and then I go through them and try to catch things as well. And they're frankly, I think, just not, not working. So I, for budget reasons and because I think it will make our meetings work better, would recommend that we could really do action minutes, which we already have a resolution for. So there's not a decision here today, but really wanted to bring, I wanted to bring this before the council so that everyone sees this discussion and we all come along at the same pace, if you will. And so again, Fairfax does what we do, although we have a resolution already that says summary action minutes and Ross does full transcription. And you can imagine how long in comparison to Ross's meetings. Ours are that, that's really not an option. It would be extremely expensive. So I want to turn it over to Christine to talk a little bit more about this, but I'll take responsibility for really, you know, wanting to fully discuss this at council because we have an inefficiency. We have a problem. We can fix it.
Thank you, Town Manager Abrams. I actually don't have much to add to what you just said. I agree with everything you just presented and I would be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Okay, go ahead.
A few questions. The first is, we had a conversation up here on records retention and the Zoom meetings. And I don't know if you've had time to explore, you know, more, but I, I think it's relevant in terms of if we do make a change or want to understand more about the context and what the, some of the conversation and deliberations were around an action item, watching the, watching the meetings is really the only way to do that, right?
To get as much content or context around a certain decision, yeah, watching the meetings is the best decision.
Yeah. So right now, where are we with, so is it like 10 years?
It said we have a 10-year retention period for town council meetings and planning commission meetings.
Can I, can I add one more thing to that? So we, our YouTube, you have the option, you have an, an option to be able to download a transcript from the YouTube. It's not something that we create.
Right.
So it may not be perfect, but in other Marin jurisdictions that do action minutes, they have a link to how you do that. And, you know, we could provide that as well. And so, but is that, but that's, is YouTube the repository for, will those videos be up of our meetings beyond the 10 years? They will. Okay. And then, so that brings me to that, to my next question. So I'm sure you know, Zoom has an AI feature and I use it pretty regularly. It, it, it is pretty phenomenal in summarizing minutes of the meeting and action items and next steps and who's accountable for what. I mean, it's, it, it kind of blows me away. So I'm just wondering, is that an opportunity?
For what?
For reducing costs really, you know, the human costs that we are paying today for, for doing something that is really well handled by AI.
Yeah, I would really like to say we did test this once and I'm wondering if it could be used for very long meetings because it was incredible. And not that we would replace action minutes with that, but that it could be something that was done on top of that. I'm not sure if it would for our length of meetings.
Or, you know, or it, what, what, you, you can't just, you know, run with it. You have to, you know, read them and tweak them, but it is, I mean, I don't know if you have it, the feature then, and, and you could test it or if there's some, if we would have to pass something to do, use that AI.
And are you talking about using that as in place for our minutes?
I, I want to explore. Yeah, yeah. Like it could produce a full document of, you know, either summary or action. And if it's summary, you know, what we're doing today, it could be handed to the person that's doing it now for just like some, some really just tightening up, you know, and then you could, that $15,000 could be even produced from there. I mean, just, just a thought.
Okay. Um, so other questions?
I guess I would like to know, are there any legal like constraints around using AI for this kind, kind of function?
I don't, you know, frequently the laws haven't kept up with technology. So there's no prohibition on it, but you are, you know, the, the minutes come back to you and you do have to approve them. I haven't, I haven't used it, so I haven't seen it.
Was a question. It was a question, truly. Um, I have a question. So we have this resolution about action minutes, but it says summary action minutes. Is that different than action minutes? Is that some sort of hybrid between summary and action? What does that mean?
Yeah, I think it was a compromise position. Yes, I think it was meant to not be fully just action minutes.
And what we have right now is some sort of hybrid that's longer than maybe this intended? I, I'm not sure. I mean, didn't our planning commission pass something saying that we're going to use action minutes?
The town council passed.
Two thousand eight.
The town council passed an ordinance for the planning commission to use action minutes.
Okay. Um, and so that, that I guess, are we following this November two thousand and six resolution or not?
It's for the planning commission. That was only for the.
This one attached is include, is for the council?
I don't have one attached to mine.
You don't?
That's the planning commission one that's signed by Susan Brandvord. I don't have one on my paper that is a.
Council and planning commission meetings.
I don't have it, so it wasn't given to me.
Okay. Well, we can fix that. Um.
That says planning commission and town council up here.
There's a separate ordinance that specifically calls out the planning commission to use action minutes. Town council and planning commission are included in the resolution attached to the staff report.
So.
So, okay, would we have more questions? I'm sorry.
Well, I, I do.
Okay. And so we'll do questions, then we'll move to public comment and we'll come back and deliver.
Okay. So at the bottom of every agenda, we have this, this, this statement. If any of the matters described above is challenged in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at a public hearing described on this agenda or in written correspondence delivered at or prior to this council meeting. So five years from now, no, I guess, no, say, well, say within a year of an action here, we, we get sued, but we have action minutes. It doesn't mention this person was even at the meeting. How, how, how is he going to prove he was at the meeting?
But you have the tape. You have the video.
But you only keep, oh, you keep that for what?
Ten years.
Right. So.
Well, AI probably has it too right now. I mean, we just don't know it.
And if you get sued, you, you have it transcribed.
Remember that all other jurisdictions in Marin are already doing action minutes except for Fairfax and Ross. So they've already overcome that issue and that person who wants to, you know, come up against the town would have the ability to go to the, to the video. They would have their own records. They could send in an email or other correspondence. All of those things are options.
Well, I'm, I'm going to tell you a little story, but I, I can wait till after we hit the public hearing you, because you'll enjoy hearing it.
Um, do we have other questions before we move to public comment? Okay. So we're going to move to public comment before, I missed somebody. Okay. Before we move to public comment, could you give me an idea if there are people online as well?
There's one raised hand on Zoom right now.
Okay, great. Okay. So let's go to public comment in the room.
Todd Greenberg speaking on behalf of everyone that is concerned about open and transparent government in Fairfax, very disappointed in what I'm hearing from Town Manager Heather Abrams, wanting to go counter to what our former mayor, Barbara Kohler, wanted to do because we've already heard this a year ago approximately. And it was stated very clearly that she thought, as the rest of the council thought at that point in time, that more descriptive meeting minutes were actually quite valuable. So I have to ask you this evening, are you for open and transparent government or are you trying to cover things up? Because this seems like a cover up, that we don't want people to know, that you don't want people or the town manager and the town attorney don't want people to know what went on in the meeting minutes? What went on in the meeting that night when everybody else has left because these meetings go so long? There's false statements in here. It does not support transparency whatsoever. That's on page two, paragraph one, two, three, four, five, paragraph six, seven, eight, paragraph nine, enhance public access and transparency. That's false, patently false. I object to this, as so should everybody. In San Anselmo, as one is speaking, the words are there. Doing this is contrary and discriminatory, discriminatory towards those that are hearing and sight impaired. Tonight's agenda has what looks like to be nine-point type. What if somebody can't read such small type? What if somebody can't hear very well? All these policies are harmful to open and transparent government.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. I just did a brief, a quick calculation. It wiped itself out, but I can do that again. I did a brief calculation. It says for court reporters in the San Francisco. Hours, two hundred seventy. Of $3,850. Say we double that for a planning commission meeting. That's under $8,000. I don't know how we're saving $15,000. Secondly, 10 years is not a long time. There was an issue, we needed the minutes regarding Deer Park Villa several years ago. There was a question about the open space with that development with 53 units. That, that had been built more than 10 years before. How secure is the storage of the audio video? Somebody can easily come in and hack. You may think you have a great system. All it takes is one hacker who's determined. So the cost really, I don't know how you're saving $15,000 because you could get a court reporter for half of what supposedly we would be saving. And there's no ID or time code that I've seen even applied now. What we're looking at is so-and-so was for, so-and-so was against, but you don't have the actual comments. And like Frank had said, it says right in the agenda that you need to know who, if someone brought something up. So those are my points. I'm against it.
Thank you. And do we still have one speaker on Zoom?
There are two speakers on Zoom. The first speaker is Cindy, followed by PJ. Cindy, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, yes, Cindy Ross again. And I just wanted to say something to address Councilmember Hellman's question about AI. And it's ironic, I was just having this conversation yesterday with, with somebody. I was, I, I had a whole bunch of tabs open on my computer and I was trying to close some of them out because I've been working on a, a whole lot of projects. And I realized that I had opened up a tab. I don't remember exactly what I was looking for at the time or, or when it was, but I found a document open that said Fairfax Councilman proposes compassionate solution to Marin County homelessness crisis. And it was regarding a January 2025 meeting. And it was put out by, it says it was Citizen Portal AI. And when I read through it, it identified the, the person that it was referring to and their comment was Sean Fitzgerald. So I, I just want to point out that AI has some real benefits. But if you don't know what you're looking at, you can get some really screwy results. So, you know, yeah, you know, regardless of what comments Sean made, he's not a seated, a seated council person right now. So I just want to caution you about using AI. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
PJ, you may unmute yourself.
Thanks, PJ. Again, speaking solely on my own behalf, I just want to echo what Cindy just said. Please avoid using AI. It's, I'm going to tie into my third point, but no need to exacerbate the boiling of the planet for something that you're just going to have to recheck and verify anyway. And it's sucking up when you're agreeing to use it, sucking up all your information to provide training for the systems. So they're just accumulating information from us or what we're saying, how we speak to improve their AI models in a way that's certainly not for our individual benefits. To one of the questions about the notice at the bottom of the agendas. notice at the bottom of the agendas, most statutes of limitations are less than 10 years for court cases. And frankly, if you wanted to bring a court case about something that was or wasn't said in the meeting, if there was a recording, you wouldn't even be allowed to use the minutes as evidence, because, you know, rules of evidence require the best evidence, and so they wouldn't factor in minutes over an actual recording. Which gets me to my next point, which is, you know, unsurprisingly, believe the opposite of what another speaker said. And having meeting minutes separate from the recording makes things more confusing, because you have conflicting sources of information. The extent there's a disagreement, people don't know what to trust or what to do. It makes things more confusing for everybody, and everybody really should be relying on the direct recording for what people say.
Thank you. Okay, and is there anyone else online at this point? Okay, so we're going to bring it back for comment. And I see, I'm going to go with Councilmember Egger, and then Councilmember Kohler.
So, interesting, it sounds like it takes at least three staffers or consultants to prepare the minutes for our meetings. It should be only one person working on it. And if a staff member reads those minutes and sees something glaringly wrong, they can say, hey, you know, we got to correct it. But having automatically all these staff people review all these minutes, that's taking a lot of staff time. So, when I was first elected in 1966, I would stop by Town Hall every other day, take a minute book out of the safe, and read Town Council meeting minutes, starting with 1931, when Fairfax Incorporated. I read every meeting minute until my 1966 election. They were not action minutes. But this was a way I could fully understand how and why Fairfax became Fairfax, and what previous, what the previous 35 years of Town Council actions were about. Not just a motion and a second, but the minutes were clear as to what they did and why they did it. And let me tell you, Fairfax was a wild town years ago. There were referendums, initiatives, and recalls. That's the history of Fairfax. In 1972, I read this in the minutes, Senator Joseph McCarthy, US Senator Joseph McCarthy, brought the House Un-American Activities Committee to the town of Fairfax to hold public hearings in the pavilion to rid Fairfax of, Fairfax elected officials and planning commissioners, to rid Fairfax of those people that were communists, the council members, the mayor, and planning commissioners. I actually did talk to some of those people when I was first elected, and got to some of the background. And that was a real thing that happened. The hearings took place right here in Fairfax, in the pavilion. And this was, Joseph McCarthy was here in Fairfax with the House Un-American Activities Committee, because they were communists in Fairfax government. I mean, I just read this in the minutes. It was crazy.
Did he have Roy Cohn with him, and RFK, who was his other attorney? Did he have both of them? So Roy Cohn and Robert Kennedy were his attorneys for that.
Were they really?
Yes, they were.
Oh, my gosh.
Also, yeah, I want to mention that one of the people that was kicked out during that was a famous poet that was gone after for various reasons, partially because she had friends and lovers who were not white, and partially because she was a lesbian and, you know, part of the labor movement. So it's a really interesting history. His name is, her name is Elsa Gidlow, and she started a, she moved out of Fairfax after that and started an artist community in Mill Valley, that's now quite well-known, that had lots of literary luminaries there. So it's a long history, it's very interesting.
So, you know, I mean, without, at least, at least some summary minutes, it's really difficult to understand what these council members were voting for and why. I think the minutes have to tell the story of Fairfax. Action minutes are just, really should be unacceptable to this community. Maybe it works fine in San Rafael, but Fairfax, folks want to know what happened. And sometimes, they've got to check the minutes, what happened five years ago? What the heck? They want to know what we're doing. So I think summary minutes is a fair solution. It's not verbatim, and it's not action.
I'd like to add something.
Next, Barbara's next, and then you'll go. Because I said that it was going to be Mr., let me just stop for a sec. So I said that it was going to be Mr. Egger, and then it'll be Barbara, and then it could be you.
Okay, so, a couple of things, since we're at deliberation. You know, I've been deposed before from two, three hours. If you've ever seen a transcript of a deposition, something for three hours is about this long. I can't imagine what a transcript of our meetings would look like. And you still have to check them. Every time I've been deposed, you have to check every word to see if it's right. So that, in my mind, is not a good solution. And the other thing is, court reporters are few and far between. A lot of people are not going into those businesses. But I don't want to be sitting here for a meeting with already a big packet, then I get something like this. My thoughts have evolved quite a lot on this since last year, when we talked about it. And part of it is because we continue to hear complaints. I didn't say it that way, I wasn't noticed, it was different. So there tends to be these continual arguments and complaints, that that's not the way it was said, or this person was missing, or, you know, we need to see more. So, last year, I was saying I like summary minutes. Everything that I sit on, and I sit on a lot of boards and commissions, everything is action minutes. But they all are recorded. So, things have changed since the past, and you can go quickly through the recordings. So, even though last year I was against this, after sitting here and hearing complaints about complaint, and all this kind of stuff, I think action minute, which is what I'm used to, and all the other boards and commissions I sit on, are the way to go. And I think the AI proposal, I think it was brought with good intentions, but I also agree with Ms. Ross, that we'd be checking those things, because, like anything, you have to check it. And I think what Council Member Egger was bringing up, we have a minutes clerk that writes those minutes, and then our deputy town clerk has to review them to make sure there's no corrections. And then Heather will check them, too. And then every time I check them, I may find something that's missing. So, it's quite a lot. And I don't think AI is a good solution at this time, because I really think we'd be checking that, and there might be, you know, things that would need a lot of correction. So you'd end up spending a lot of staff time checking, and then somebody like me, who tends to be a bit anal retentive, would be checking it too. And so, you know, while last year I had a different opinion, I'm more supportive of the action minutes. I think we can clean this up. We can save maybe on the order of close to $15,000, which we can use for a little bit of some roadwork. And let's just go, you know, the future is now, and we do have those recordings. And I think one of the things I've seen from our deputy clerk, Christine, is she can tell us, you know, where you need to go in the recording. And so, it's not that you have to sit there looking through six hours necessarily. I'm not good at that, but that helps. So, this is where I am today. I'm supportive of action minutes, and I think it's cleaner, and we will save staff time, as well as spending money on having a minutes clerk, and then everybody reviewing it.
Okay.
Mr. Garingelli.
Thank you. It's interesting, I like to tie all this stuff in tonight, that we had a big presentation about the library today, and I'm pretty sure everything's written down at a library, in a book. And I think written words, and summary minutes, and really good summary minutes, by the way, however best we can make them, is a much better way historically to look at things now. And not to mention, keeping things for 10 years is not enough, by the way. You want to be able to look back. The written word is way better, a condensed version of the discussions. I think that's the way to go. I don't think verbatim minutes, I agree that would be too long. I don't really agree with the AI thing either. So I think it's money well-spent to have real minutes and real information for people to go back to and see a historical aspect of Fairfax, in our Town Council, in our government, without having to resort to going to, trying to find another video on YouTube or somewhere else. Now, it doesn't prevent you from doing that, but you can get a lot more out of summary minutes than you can trying to watch five hours of this on video. So, that's all I got. Thank you. So I'm for summary minutes.
Okay, and other comments, or I'll make mine?
Well, you know, if a council member does not feel comfortable with their statements, then maybe they shouldn't be making them. I mean, it's, I think it's important that the why and a where for is included in the minutes. It could be done in the summary minutes real easy, you know? Councilmember Garingelli said this, or whatever. I mean, I don't understand. We're not going to save that much money. Thank you.
So I'm just going to make a couple of comments. So I just wanted to place this on the agenda, because there have been so many arguments in here about, you know, who's translating the minutes how, who's, you know, representing which perspective or which point of view, and are they doing it properly? And I would like this to be added to it, because I think that's important. And then another council member says, no, I want this added to it. So, you know, it is really messy, and it's sort of a problem. I've noticed that members of the public and two council members have, you know, particularly argued about what should be included. And we've had delays of approval of the minutes because of these policy disagreements. And then, you know, we have the $15,000 a year, which is a real problem. And the length of our meetings is really difficult, and no other community in Marin has meetings this long or this complicated, or this amount of public comment, for that matter. You know, people tell me, like, you know, we have these big meetings, we have this big, beautiful meeting hall in Cordero Madera, and like, literally two people come. So we have a very different community. I did want to mention that I have worked for years in, I worked for the courts in Marin, as one of my early jobs, with court clerks. And they take a lot of shortcuts, and there are minutes, too. But, yeah, they are in high demand. You don't want to have to read minutes that are this thick. Like, that's worse than having summary minutes. The other thing is that when people, when it takes five hours to do a meeting, it's, you know, when I had, I hired transcriptionists, it doesn't take them five hours, it doesn't take them the exact number of hours to transcribe that the meeting runs for. It probably takes them, I think we had an algorithm that it took about three to five times, depending on the complexity and the number of people speaking. So it takes a lot of time, and I'm saying algorithm, my calculation, okay, is it takes three to five hours longer than the actual meeting to do really good notes that are like, really good transcription. So, you know, I think that it's a little misleading to say you just, you know, apply $55 to five hours. It's not really that way. And I think the person that does these in summary format, you know, struggles with getting all of the, you know, deciding what detail to include and what detail to leave out. So, you know, I just wanted to put that out there. You know, it is interesting to me that everybody in the county who has shorter meetings does action minutes, except for us, except for Ross, which has, you know, it's a little town with little tiny meetings. So, you know, there are kind of pros and cons to doing this. One of the things that I did wonder about is whether, so one of the things that some communities do is they have those kind of media feeds, where you can go back into the meeting, and it kind of has both the minutes, or at least the agenda, and then the video, and you can kind of click on the part of the agenda and go directly to the, you know, San Rafael uses it, right? But I think it's really expensive, right? Is this correct? It's not something we can afford right now.
Well, Christine might be, or Deputy Town Clerk might be able to talk a little bit more about the capabilities on YouTube. But some of the features that you're talking about come from a more robust agenda management software that we don't use, because of the cost and complexity.
Okay, because I know some people are saying, well, when, you know, they can see the word scrolling or what have you. I mean, I know that San Rafael and the county use a different system, but I did understand it was quite expensive. So it's unfortunate we can't get that, because I do think it's pretty user-friendly in a lot of ways. And that might be what Mr. Greenberg was referring to. People have asked if we can have, what do you call it, subtitles or something rolling? Not sure if that's something that would be beneficial to us in terms of just our videos. But the other question I really had is, is there a way to move to action minutes and have the AI version as a backup of some sort that's not a legal backup, so that we just store it in case it's needed in the future? And people can kind of skim over that, and then go back to the video if they feel like there's some question? Or is that just adding more chaos to the question?
The AI transcription is available to anyone at any time.
So you could turn that video back on and turn on AI transcription on it?
Correct.
It's a Zoom feature.
It's also available through Zoom. There's lots of different AI apps that you can build, or you have the option to include them. So like with AI, or with Zoom, yes, there's an app through the Zoom portal that you can initiate to do an AI transcription. YouTube has an AI transcription. There's AI coming from all directions.
But I'm sure, see, because this is the thing that confuses me. So, you know, I've done a couple of meetings now and used the AI function for Zoom. It was like phenomenal, but I'm sure it makes mistakes, like AI does. You have to be careful. But when I look at YouTube, I don't get an AI summary of the meeting. What I get is just like a rolling transcription that's sometimes kind of wrong and goes on forever. Is that, is there actually an AI function that summarizes the meeting?
That I'm unsure of, but I would just like to emphasize that any AI transcription is imperfect. It's not reliable. Yeah, there's going to be errors throughout the.
Right, whereas I'm going to assume that in action minutes, there's not going to be an error, because it's going to be just the actions and who voted on them, and therefore, that's the one we're going to make really correct. Is there any way to have some backup that's less correct? If somebody really wants to get into the nitty-gritty, they can look at it, and then kind of cross-reference it with the video to make sure it's right?
Well, so, if I may, I would suggest that is the video, that you can watch the video and see, you know, the people and their body language. You can, there's a lot that you can see. And the transparency of action minutes is that you're not having to wade through all of that noise. You're just getting to what happened, what actually happened, not who said what, and in what way, and, you know, that, that's not.
Right, because the purpose of minutes is to record the decision of the body. And what we've seen happen a lot is that when there's more context in minutes, it's perceived differently by whoever's reading it. So, it's hard to accurately capture what's happening at the meeting, the way that one person remembers it, you know, as opposed to the next person. That's why the video recording is the best for that purpose. But the meeting minutes, the purpose of the meeting minutes are to record the decision of the governing body.
And if I may just add.
I would really disagree with that. The purpose of the minutes is so the people who live in this town that we serve know why we voted the way we did. That's why they elected us, to represent them.
What if, if it was summary minutes, and there was a disclaimer on it that says, if you don't agree with the summary, go watch the video. That way, don't leave any too much wiggle room for people to complain. Because first of all, I've never complained about the minutes. But I don't, it's important to some people, and I think it's important. But we've recorded them this way for 75 years. I don't see any reason to stop. I think it's good. Fairfax isn't, those other towns. Look at, look at what happened tonight. Those folks were mad about stuff, and for good reason. Two people come to Cordero Madera, I'm sorry, that's, that's all they got going on. But here, people are involved.
Yeah, well, they have Win Cup, but.
That's why I came back after 20 years.
Yeah, so go ahead. Yeah, sorry. I didn't, I didn't mean.
Were you done, Mike?
Are you done?
You're done?
Okay, great, okay. Okay, great, okay.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm on the fence about this. I really understand that it's labor intensive and that's why I think we should employ the AI and hand it to the person who's doing the transcript as a tool to, you know, a support tool. I'm not saying use it, you know, exclusively. Yeah, I just, I I do think that the summary minutes providing, you know, how many people spoke, like how much interest there was in a person. Of course, people are going to subjectively interpret how they want to. I I hear that. But I do think it's helpful for the community to read minutes that reflect how many people showed up for a meeting to speak publicly or or chime in via phone or Zoom.
That would be recorded in the minutes. In the action minutes.
Can you explain?
Who spoke, who spoke would be recorded in the action minutes.
Who's, but what they, in favor or not in favor or, I mean, no color to what.
The minutes are not intended to have any color.
So I guess I just want to ask, I sit on a lot of bodies that do action minutes and I don't recall seeing people who spoke being noted in the action minutes.
I think jurisdictions do it a little differently.
Okay, well, I mean, to me, it seems like there's kind of a middle ground. So if we went with action minutes that just summarize people speaking and saying in favor, not in favor, rather than any, you know, discussion of, you know, man X said not supportive and then went ahead to say other things, would that be the middle ground to this kind of action minutes with a little more information? I'm really frankly tired of hearing people complain about our minutes and, you know, wanting to have every single word they said. And this is not a transcript, it's not a transcript. It's supposed, what we've been doing are summary minutes, period. So it's not a transcript. A transcript is like a court reporter. And I I really have concerns about giving somebody the AI version, which will be incorrect in certain.
I'm not suggesting that, okay? I'm not suggesting that. I don't, I think you're misinterpreting.
I think the mayor suggested that you would give them that, too.
I'm just exploring that idea, but.
Well, I just, I think there's in, you know, we've got, so what about a middle ground that's primarily action minutes with more information than what you generally see in the action minutes I've seen, which is really just a recording of the vote?
Okay.
Not as much as what we've had.
Okay. I I sort of feel like we're at this point where maybe we just need to continue this to a date uncertain. I'm going to put out there that I wanted to start bringing this conversation forward, but it's really late. Well, it's not really late by our standards, but it's late enough at night. There's very few members of the public watching who might have, you know, a stake in this. You know, I wanted us to start thinking about it, but I'm, you know, I'll entertain a motion. But I'm like, fine, let it go.
I entertain a mo, I, I entertain, I'm so tired. I move that we make no change to the summary minutes at this time.
Councilmember Agar.
Aye.
Councilmember Garen Gully.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
No.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Aye.
Okay. Got so engaged in that, I forgot I was, so we're taking the meeting here. Okay, so we are going to move on to the consent calendars, calendar. Again, tell people that the council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action or vote. In the alternative, items on the consent calendar may be removed by any town council or staff member for separate discussion and vote. Public comment for items on the consent calendar happens once rather than after each individual item. During the public comment period on consent items, speakers may comment on any items from this section of the agenda. Each speaker will have up to two minutes and may speak only once. So are there any questions before we move to the public?
I just want to mention one thing is there's a supplement to item 6F that we have on the dais and I'm assuming out on the safe. There was something that was missed on one of the pages and that's been corrected. So just want to bring that up. And I did have some questions that I think staff will get back to me on one of them. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to move to public comment? Okay, so let's get going with public comment.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. I object to Mayor Lee's O'Blash having changed how these consent agenda items are presented to the public. They used to be numbered, now they're lettered. They're being presented in approximately nine-point type. It's hard for some people to read. There's 16 items. That gives me seven and a half seconds per consent calendar item. As such, I'd like to pull items A, D, F, H, J, and M. I have comments on each of these. I'd ask that you respect that. There are key things here that differ from what was said in prior meetings. There's expenditure of funds to special interest groups that are discriminatory against others. There are issues related to the encampment that need to be discussed. On the second reading, the proclamation, let me just go to the proclamation. For two years in a row, one particular group has received preference for their flags during the month of June. But June is National Caribbean American Heritage Month and Black Music Month. And it's been brought up at prior meetings that Italians and Irish Americans who are a large part of Fairfax should also be honored. Why is it that this town is spending money on one particular special interest group to the detriment of others? I'd like to speak to these others, but I'm going to run out of time. Please pull those items I requested. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. On the budget, I went through and I saw that I got a different total than Mr. Bivret. I found that the town's spending almost $410 a month on bottled water. That's like 5,000 a year. $410 on bottled water? I thought we were supposed to be getting used, getting rid of bottled water. I mean, you could put in like whole house systems for less than that. Where you just, and then you just change the filter. You can go to the Good Earth and get RO water for way less than that. So why are we spending $410 on that? Also, I saw that there were a bunch of workshops that were attended. My numbers are a little different, but I included parking. Michael Bivret's numbers are $4,669.23 in the past month. I think that the town people should get a report on what happened at these meetings, especially since we just spent $4,669. And it doesn't seem like all council members went. As far as the credit cards, Town Manager Abrams last month said there were 14 credit cards. It turns out there's 26. I don't know why the police chief has 19, but then he has six kids, so maybe that's why. I'm just joking. I didn't see a card for the Public Works Director. Hopefully that was either never issued or returned upon his dismissal. And the other thing that was interesting in there was that supposedly we've been banking with a bank that charges us $50 to write a check? Are you kidding?
Thank you.
Wouldn't you change your bank?
Thanks so much. Is there anyone on?
There are no speakers on Zoom.
Okay, do I, is anybody going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with a note that for item 6F, we have a supplement.
I'll second.
Councilmember Agar.
No, I'm here to, I'm here to pull items. Does anybody want to understand that? That's my right as a council member.
I think you need to pull them before we go through it or can you pull them now? Please clarify.
We have a motion on the table that we're voting on.
Okay, so we do the motions.
First of all, let me tell you what the law says. I've got a right to pull an item from the consent calendar. Are you, is somebody saying I don't have that right?
Wait, 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 calm down. We're going to just get some clarification from the town attorney.
Would you like to cite to a code section for that, Frank?
Go ahead. Wait, wait, wait. So can I just, can we just like, let's, let's look.
Are you saying I cannot pull a consent item here?
Folks, I'm trying to get some.
Majority of the council can pull a consent item.
Wait, can I, so let's just like for a second, calm down. And settle down. Can Frank, calm down. I'm not saying that you can't. I want some clarification because usually it seems that we pull consent calendar items at the start rather than the end. So I just want to know legally, what is the process by which we do this, just to clarify?
Well, you already have a motion and second on the, on the table, don't you?
I will just say this, why don't we let Councilmember Agar pull the items?
Okay.
And I, you know, I.
Somebody has to withdraw the motion then, thank you.
I'm withdrawing the motion, but I also say Councilmember Agar, in the future, would you pull them before we go to public comment? Thank you.
Well, I thought what we do is go to public comment and if the public brings up an item they think should be pulled, and and if I didn't think it should be pulled, but they made a case for it, well, I would pull the item. I mean, I'm, there's 16 items here. I've got some questions, like item A, it says, receive financial statement and dispersment reports for January 2024.
Would you like to pull that?
My report says January 2025. So, you know, I'm, you know, it's, I'm sorry that that confuses people, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you should pick the items you want to pull and then we'll discuss all of them and have public comment on all of them.
On the consign, on the, on the council members' assignments, I don't know, everyone puts, some council members put down everything they've done for the whole month. I just thought we put down what, what meetings we went to that were assigned to, but if, you know, if you'd like to know what I did, I mean, I, I went to two memorials this past weekend, for instance. Archie Williams Jr. Memorial was at, was at the Fairfax Sanasoma Children's Center. It was well attended by Fairfax and Sanasoma residents.
Did you want to pull that, pull the council member reports off of the consent calendar to discuss them?
Well, I had a couple here. I necessarily wasn't going to pull them all. I just wanted, wanted to tell you that, make a, make a comment that, you know, it shows that I, that I attended a meeting late, but I did, I went to the MCC MC meeting, I didn't, but I, I wrote my report before that meeting.
So I think that would be really good if maybe we could clarify at some point what the intention of the council member reports are, just because, you know, we have council members who haven't been on the council for a little while and maybe we have different expectations.
The council member reports are intended to capture meetings attended by town council members in the capacity as a council member.
So like if I go to my friend's birthday party, that's not something that I would record if I went representing the town to.
Correct.
And I think some of us put in things like we went to an event sponsored by the town just to show that we did them, but maybe we shouldn't have them in there, so.
If I may just add a little color to that, in other jurisdictions, this is done orally at the end of the meeting and it's very quick for maybe obvious reasons, right? Because we're all tired. So it's, those meetings, because other jurisdictions often pay per meeting, right? Until you hit the, the max. So it's a legal requirement that you say, I went to this meeting, I went to this meeting, I met this person, if it is on behalf of the town.
So just because you weren't here, because what we were doing in the past is we were trying to capture the meetings we attended on behalf of the town. People weren't prepared, they were scribbling notes. We agreed at a few retreats earlier that we would do written reports to save time because it was, ended up taking an hour. And I think one of the things that maybe, you know, we now do them per month. So even if your report is turned in before you attended that meeting, you can put it down and what I usually write is something like, report submitted before meeting held. So there's probably different ways to do this, but it, you know, it would be a good thing for people to just continue the writing, but maybe we're putting down too much that we shouldn't.
So we could have some clarification. I think a lot, like what happens is that because we've heard from members of the public that they would like to know like what happened when somebody went to this, that joint powers authority meeting on behalf of Fairfax, they wanted to know what happened. Now, of course, if those people really wanted to know, they could also go to the meeting notes for those bodies, which are public information. But I think our council members have tended to err on the side of transparency by putting down a lot of information about what was decided at those meetings. And I think also I've seen council members, like I do this, you know, if there is an important town event, you know, we often like record that we were there because I saw people like, you know, saying, I hope those council members were at that SSP meeting, I only saw one of them. Well, yeah, I mean, you know, so a lot of us will put down, yeah, we were there, we are concerned. Maybe we shouldn't be doing that. But I think some clarification of how we want to move forward on this would be good at some point.
So, you know, in reading the consent calendar, it says, in the alternative, items on a consent calendar may be removed by any town council or staff member for separate discussion and vote.
Yes, they, yes, they may. It's usually at the beginning, but I think you can do it now.
So I, I, okay, I would, I would pull A. I would pull M, the report on credit card use. I would, I would pull those two items and ask for, for discussion.
Okay, so.
Oh, F, F, let's do F two, two. A, F, and M.
Okay, so we're going to pull those three items and we're going to have a separate question discussion and then public comment, I mean, question, public comment, and then discussion if we need to. So.
Mayor, could I just make a motion for the rest of the consent?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you.
So I would make a motion for the rest of the consent calendar, not including A, F, and M, to pass those, approve those.
I'll second.
Councilmember Agar.
Oop, aye.
Councilmember Garen Gully.
You have to turn your mic on, it's being recorded.
It is?
Yes.
No?
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Okay, so we're moving on to A, which is the financials. And see, there was a reason you stayed. Okay, so if you'd like to ask him questions or comments, that would be great.
Thank you. So I'll, just, just going over the financials. 121 is the town attorney and there's three months of expenses yet to go. We've spent $428,811 today. So my question is, I've gone over previous reports and there's been three different law firms included. There's been Best Basset Greger, there's been our town attorney, which is the new law, what is it? Town, town, town law.
Pow. Public agency law.
And then another one was, was.
Bertram.
Dealing with, Bertram dealing with police issues. So is the 428, 811, is that all three law firms or is that? Or is that just public law?
Michael's looking up the detail, but I will tell you, that's all three.
So I, I noticed, I noticed this month for Best, Best and Krieger, it was, there's two checks listed. One was $47,571.71. The other one was $47,288.40. What's in, they have the same dates. I guess we paid, we made the payments on those same days. But that looks like it's two separate payments.
May I?
It's on page 2 of 4.
Yes.
Towards the back.
So there is, with Best, Best and Krieger, you have specialized services. That's one matter number.
No, no, I'm not questioning it. I'm just asking if that's included in, in the total.
Let me finish, please.
Okay, sure, sure.
Yeah. And we also have litigation being handled by them, and we don't call that out, each case separately necessarily. And so that's a combination of specialized services and litigation.
So of, of the $428,811, $94,860 was, was billing for Best, Best and Krieger. But we don't know how many months that is. I, I don't know how many months of billing that is, but I, I thought, I thought we were well over $428,000 last month when we look at all, all the, all the litigations together, but I didn't bring my packets from previous months. But okay.
Detail register, which is after the regular check register, on page 4 of 9, it lists all invoices for Best, Best and Krieger. And you can see that those are for the month of January for one, for the $47,571.1, and for the month of February for the second one, the $47,288.40.
Okay.
And it does detail the, all the cases and, and specific invoices within that for those, each of those checks.
Frank, is it possible you could?
You know, I'm looking, I'm looking at the, at, at, at the budget, and, and we'd spent over, looks like $700,000 is projected this year. So am I, am I missing something here? You know, I, I know we didn't do, we didn't take up the, the proposed budget, but I was, I, I went through that, and, and it was some summary, some expenses for the year. It looked like it was gonna be over seven, well over $700,000 for legal.
So right now, Frank, we have.
Which is the future?
One, two, three, four, five cases that are outstanding right now that are ongoing. And Best, Best and Krieger is handling four of those. There is one case that BBK did not handle. It's completed, but it's still in this fiscal year. And there is a cost recovery case that some, that another firm is handling. But of the ones handled by Best, Best and Krieger, four cases. We have two land use matters, we have that litigation that lead Nito, the one on the wall property, and we have the anti-camping ordinance, the homeless encampment litigation as well. And so it is almost impossible to know who's gonna sue you and when they're gonna sue you, but you still have to defend it. And so it's difficult to try to estimate or anticipate how much a litigation budget is, or should be. Some of these cases hopefully will be completed soon, and others may go on for a few more months. But it, you can take different years, and you can look at it. Hopefully next year, the litigation will be less, we won't be sued as much. But since these aren't cases that were started by us, with the exception of the cost recovery, where we're trying to recoup monies that we spent, hopefully that will be lower. But it is really, really hard to know who's gonna sue you and when they're gonna sue you, and you still have to defend it. So if you're looking for just, just the town attorney budget, no litigation or anything, anything at all like that, that is a combination of public agency law and Best, Best and Krieger for specialized services. So that's, that's something that's much more predictable. Although I will tell you that for specialized services, you never know what types of, of issues or questions will come up. You could have employment law matters and that sort of thing, and, and that's unanticipated. So it's, legal budgets are, are easier to pinpoint and to really estimate when you're talking about just basic services. If you're talking about specialized services or litigation, especially litigation, it's very difficult to pinpoint how much that's gonna be.
I was just trying to get a figure, you know, month to month, what, what litigation's running us. That's, that, I've been, I understand, we have to defend, of course, we have to defend ourselves, but I'm just trying to get a cost of, of, of litigation. The combination of everyone who's involved defending our town, that's all. And, and, and I know it's not gonna be 400, whatever that number was, but anyway. Okay, that's enough, that's, that's enough discussion on that. I had a question.
Well, I, I can, okay, okay, it's good, he's got others. If I go on the, okay, if you wanna go ahead and then we'll let him continue, is that okay? No, I thought we were gonna have Heather go first, no? Okay, we'll let Frank go first, thank you. I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to keep track of who's going, saying what, so let's go with him, shh.
On, on, on page, was it, 1 of 17, the hotel tax, TOT. We budgeted $20,000. Looks like year-to-date activity, $18,855, that we've taken in already, is that true? That's hotel tax. So my question is, does that include the short-term rentals like Airbnb and?
Yes.
And do we know what the short-term rentals are separate from the actual hotel that's in town?
We could calculate it, but we're not doing it, we're not reporting it separately.
So I'm just wondering, i- i- if, you know, we passed an ordinance, I, I wasn't on the council, the ordinance passed, but I'm wondering if, if we're, if we're collecting TOT from, from short-term rentals, you know, without seeing numbers, I have no idea.
Our hotel activity is pretty constant. So at this point during the year through March, we've probably received 2, probably 50% of what we budgeted there for the hotel. The remainder is probably the short-term.
Short-term rentals?
Yeah.
And, and do we have it by company, like there's Airbnb and VRBO? Do we know exactly what each company pays us?
I know exactly what they paid us, nothing. We don't get anything from Airbnb, we don't get anything from VRBO. We only receive our rentals directly from those who are renting units, and we collect that money through a website that we've got.
Wow, you know, you know, that, that First District Court of Appeals decision said, "If a town makes a request to any one of those agencies, short-term rental agencies, they have, they have to supply us with how much money they've collected." I know they're collecting money from some Fairfax residents, they're collecting a tax. And I know some Fairfax residents with short-term rentals, they're not sending the town money, they're sending it to Airbnb.
So a couple of years ago, I wrote a scathing letter to Airbnb saying, "You're telling your people to collect this money, but you're not doing it. We haven't received a dime. We've never received any correspondence back from them saying that they're willing to cooperate on this."
Okay, it's an issue we gotta deal with, you're down, right? Okay.
I have to say, when we switched vendors, was it made clear to me that we weren't collecting from Airbnb? I mean, I.
Our, our website is totally oriented towards people registering their unit with us and paying us directly.
Oh, and them actually, they actually writing a check to town for a percentage?
Paying it online through the, through the website, or sending us a check, yes.
Wow, okay, I don't, we're not getting it. Okay, let's jump to I, item, what was the second one I pulled here?
We have.
Oh, F, F.
We have to take public comment.
Go to public comment unless we have more questions from councilmembers on the financials? And if we're ready for that, then I'll move to public comment. Okay, so go ahead and come up and.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, thank you for pulling this important item since Fairfax, at the budget workshop, was planning on having a $2 million operating deficit, and tonight's budget indicated that it was gonna be a million-plus-dollar operating deficit, so I congratulate you on having less of a planned operating deficit. It's quite concerning that the former town council approved town attorney Janet Colson to leave BB&amp;K and to start up her own one-person law firm with the idea that we would be saving money on our legal bills, but yet we're having a record year. Some $700-plus thousand in legal bills. Now, the explanation is you can't control who sues you, but I'd argue differently that it's actually bad management that's resulted in these lawsuits, not taking care of a dangerous, costly homeless encampment up at Perry Park for years, acting like ostriches, sticking their heads in the sand, not wanting to deal with it, endangering kids, polluting our creek. Our legal bills, according to the finance reports, this is amalgamating multiple reports, but having conferred with our finance director, for the past prior four years, were $418,000 over budget, over budget in three out of the four years, and this year we're running at a recent comment by attorney Janet Colson, somewhere in the neighborhood of $230,000 to $269,000 over budget. We are spending more for a town of 7,300 than Sanasoma does for 12,000 people.
Great, thank you.
There's a problem here.
Hi, Mark Bell again. So going back to the credit card charges, it said that there were two hotel fees, and I'm assuming this was with some type of conference, two fees of $812.58. A little further down in the credit cards, there were five charges that looked like for the same conference, two were $675, three were $375. Who went? Because I looked at the reports of, maybe I should've gone back to January, except this was January of 2025, to see if it was listed, who actually attended these conferences. But as I said, if, and as Todd pointed out, if we're running a $1.1 million operating budget deficit, what did we get for our $4,669.23? And if you look at the, the other thing I would like to see on the financials is what the actual salaries are for the actual people we have. A lot of, there's a lot of positions listed that aren't filled, and then there's salary ranges, but nothing says exactly how many people we have and what they're being paid. I would think it would be expected that the townspeople would know how many employees the town has and what they're being paid. Can't be that difficult to figure out. $410 a month for water, wow, that's amazing. Bottled water at that, I thought we were like against bottled water.
Great, thank you, is there anyone online?
We have one speaker online. PJ, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you, just want to quickly chime in. I didn't expect a discussion on this, but on the hotel user tax and the issue with Airbnb and Verbo not paying. I think this highlights the importance of having an enforceable rental registry. Otherwise, how on earth can you possibly know what money the town is supposed to collect if you don't have a registry of rentals? And if, you know, that rental income is meant to be taxed, how do you have a record of what the tax should be if you don't have what the rental amount is? The town is just gonna keep losing out on money it's owed if we don't actually have a record of all the properties being rented in the town. And then I just feel like I'm taking crazy pills because the reason the town is a lawsuit on the homeless encampment is because of doing what the public demanded in trying to sweep the camp. That's what prompted the lawsuit. If the town council continued to do nothing, that person would not be suing the town. Thanks.
Thank you, is there anyone else? Okay, I'm, unless we have other comments, I did wanna make one comment, which is, again, are we in an operating deficit?
The term deficit is a, a term which basically means that your revenues are less than what your expenditures are. We are using revenues that have been collected in prior years and have created a surplus of revenues such that our starting reserve balance is 33% for this next year's budget, and spending it down to 25%. I would argue that it is impossible to ever reduce your reserve if you, if you're always balancing your revenues with your expenses. How would you ever reduce your reserve down? So are we in a deficit? The term deficit is not a bad term. It, it's not a structural deficit, it's not something where we're borrowing money to have to do this. We are spending monies that we collected in prior years and making them useful. Otherwise, all you do is, is collect money and not use it for the purposes for which it was collected.
All right, okay, thank you. I just want to keep saying that because it seems like no matter how many times we repeat it, it gets spun as something else. Do we have any other? Yes, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6A, please.
Second.
Councilmember Agar.
That should be changed to 2025, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good, good. Aye.
Should we, can we?
Councilmember Garen Gully. Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes.
So on, on, let's see, it's okay.
You said 6F? 6F.
I've reread F, 6F, I'm okay with it now.
A, so now that you've pulled it, we have, she's gonna let you do that, will you sit down for a second?
Okay, so we're not gonna have any more comment, it sounds like, from the DIAOS on F, but we've already pulled it, so go ahead, you can speak on it.
Todd Greenberg, once again, attending meetings and reading what's been put down, I'd ask that this be reconciled. At a prior meeting, planning director Jeff Beisenweiger indicated that a section of this that is referenced on page 8, would you please quit laughing, Ms. Hellman? Should I continue to, I have your attention? Okay, I'll note that you're laughing and smirking.
Todd, move along.
And not paying attention to what I'm saying.
Fight finger, sorry, it just struck me as funny. Fight singer, sorry, it just struck me as funny, apologize, please continue, and you can have 10 seconds back.
Page eight, rent reporting. The Planning Director, however you pronounce his name, indicated that it would be voluntary, but that's not the way it's worded here. The way it's worded here in B, there's A, B, and C, it's mandatory compliance, and there's actually a fine that's involved. I'd like, before you move forward and adopt this, that his prior comments be reconciled with what is published here today. That's all.
Excuse me.
Yes.
If I may just point the council's attention to the supplement for this item.
Yes. Okay, so let me just stop for a second here, is there anyone else online?
There is one caller on Zoom, it's an iPhone user, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive, Fairfax. Regarding the financial reporting, which I think we're still on.
No, we're actually, we've moved on past that, sorry.
Oh, I had my hand up for that before the vote came.
Did, I don't think we saw you, and now we're moved on to the accessory dwelling units item.
Well, I definitely had my hand up for that before the vote came.
Sorry, sorry.
So I don't get to speak?
I think usually we won't let you speak on an item if it's already passed. Was there any possibility that her hand was up? Okay, I think we just need to move on, this is, we're now on another item.
So bringing it back, are you bringing it back, Mayor?
I am bringing it back.
Okay, I just want to clarify that what the Jeff Beiswinger, our Planning Director, said was that it would be reported anonymously to protect confidentiality, he did not say it would not be included, so to me, that's accurate and the supplement. I had asked that we extend the amnesty for 20 years, and that was what's in the supplement. So I would like to make a motion to approve item 6F, please.
I'll second you.
Councilmember Agar.
Aye.
Councilmember Garen Gully.
6F, 6F, the AGU.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes, okay, and I think now we are moving on to item M.
The last one was, was the credit cards, and I'm concerned about the purchases that are being made with no purchase orders. If we've got 26 credit cards out there, somehow the expenditures have to be controlled. There's a sheet that has, when it was a previous town manager, Mr. Rock, and a number of employees who had credit cards with their limits on them. We don't see those lists for now, for today, with the people who have credit cards and limits. For instance, Michael Rock had a limit of, monthly limit of $25,000 on his credit card. I don't know how much money he spent on that card, but, but is there a list today of credit card, people who have credit cards and the limits on their ability to spend?
So what I tried to do in this informational item, because long, long ago, I think it was 2015, you know, the town started using credit cards, which was long, long ago in our minds, but, you know, honestly, that was a lot later than a lot of cities. The, you know, we could do another informational report that would give you the limits per person, but the controls are certainly there. So the way that works is that not only are there limits on each of the cards, there's a total limit for the town each month, and then as people, people are trained and people understand that this is for, you know, town business use only, and that it will be scrutinized by their department head, and then when you, when the bills come, there's a master bill, which comes to the finance department, and it has all of the charges. And then there are sub-bills, just like you get at home for your credit card, and it lists out, just as you get at home, each transaction. And employees are responsible for coding each transaction with the funding code, which matches what's on your budget, right? So for example, 01211861 would be what I would use when I am going to a business meeting and have to pay for an admission, for example. And then in addition to that budget code, which then shows, it goes into the expenses reports that you're seeing all the time, right? So it's part of the budget, it's not separate in any way. You also are listing what that expense was for. So for example, that, that code I might use and say, I went to the ICMA conference, which is, in my employment agreement, says that the town will pay for ICMA conferences. And so that, that's all lined out there, the dates, and attached to that is the receipt that shows that it was paid and paid to the appropriate, you know, agency or whatever it is, right? So all that comes into the finance department and then is checked by our auditors, right? So that's a routine part of city business, that's something that all cities and towns do. So I also heard some criticism, I'll just be honest, some criticism today about the number of items on consent and how much it was, and this is, again, I just want to point out, an informational item, it's not required, it's something that, you know, the council was expressed interest in, and we wanted to give some additional information on, but we're always trying to balance that, we want to give you all of the information transparency and at the same time, not overload you or the, or the members of the public with so much that it's, just becomes noise.
Heather, a question about controls, so in the expense management system where you're inputting, does the manager of the staff member with the credit card, when they submit all their codes for their transactions, then that spits out a report that's approved by their manager, is that right?
So each of the department heads needs to basically approve that, and it goes to finance.
Right.
So, you know, for the police department, as an example, they do something, which I guess I'll just call a little extreme, which is, the chief has all of the cards in his office, and he only allows those cards out when he is directing someone to make a purchase.
Right.
That's not the case in every department, because you can imagine, for example, we want supplies to be ordered.
Sure, 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 sure. But in the event that a transaction was not appropriate or pre-approved by the manager, or inadvertently, if you pulled out the wrong credit card, we have a policy that that staff member is liable and responsible for that transaction, paying that transaction.
Yes, absolutely, and that could be a personnel action, right? So that, that person needs to, one, if it's something, you know, the only time you can really make a mistake like that inadvertently, because the card is very distinct. It's a Cal card, it says for official use only on it, and it has a very distinct look from any other card you would have in your wallet. So the only real time that I have seen that, not here, but elsewhere, where that mistake has been made, is if someone is making Amazon purchases, and they may have multiple cards loaded into their Amazon account, and if they mistakenly get the wrong one when they're ordering a movie, then they need to pay the town back immediately. And if that's even a pattern of practice, that could be a personnel action, and I have not seen that here at all.
Any other questions, sorry, go ahead.
I do, don't hear. So, this report says for a one-year period, roughly one-year period, $24,120 was spent on credit cards. But there's, but there's some reports out there, they say $939,000 was spent on credit cards over the past three years. So this past year, only $24,000, so that, does that mean $915,000 was spent in two years on credit cards?
No, I think you're misreading that report. So that $24,000 is per month, and then I broke it down, in that sentence, you'll see that that equates to about, I believe it was $900 per card.
412.
That's right in the report.
56. Oh, so that's one month, $24,000. So 10 months is $240,000, $205.
I can, I can read it for you, the town's total Cal card monthly payment between April 2024 and March 2025, so that's monthly payment, was $24,120.56 divided by the 26 cards equals $928 average per card per month, period. Right, so that includes, as I, as I wrote in the report, that includes the entirety of supplies purchased at the Fairfax Lumber. That includes all of the Zoom, Adobe, et cetera. There's lots of standard supplies that go into that, and most of those items simply are not available through another means. So maybe we could convince Fairfax Lumber to go back to checks, but they won't like it.
Why would you do that? I mean, it's so inefficient. I just want, I appreciate the rigor that, you know, folks are inspecting everything for transparency, but I just want to apologize on behalf of the council, because I find this utterly ridiculous.
Well, I just-
Utterly ridiculous.
Okay.
This is, I'm not done speaking. This, credit cards have been a payment vehicle since the 70s, and you should not have to defend the use of card payments. It's efficient, it offers data, like checks don't, in the same way. I mean, I know this because I have a card background, so I just, I just feel really badly that you had to spend all this time defending what is so standard and contemporary. It's just ridiculous.
I will say, I'd like to say something.
So Councilmember Garen Gully.
Oh, thank you.
And you, okay, go ahead.
I will say that for the amount of staff members we have in our town, it's a lot of credit cards. Not every company gives a credit card to everybody. There's some other ways to handle it where there's less discretion. I mean, I can understand, in the chief's case, that there might be some emergency-type things that need to be done, but anyway, I don't think that, you know, I don't think that's the best way to control expenses, but that's a lot of credit cards, that's all I can say.
Okay, and Councilmember Agar, did you have another question?
There's been a number of Public Records Act requests made, and the numbers these people, these folks in town are coming up with, an expenditure of $939,000 over three years. And so, is it, does this report say $24,120.56 a month? Is that per month?
Yes, that's what I read, and that's what's written in the report.
Is that correct? Okay, so that means $289,446.12 the past year.
For that year.
For that year.
Approximately, I-
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I mean, that's an awful lot of money, you know.
So we review all of the expenses monthly, so in my mind, it makes a lot more sense to think about it monthly because we're checking it a lot more frequently than once a year or every three years. It's a matter of, you know, someone is, for whatever reason, choosing a three-year period.
Right, so I'm just, my final question here before we go to public is, my understanding is that all of this is reflected in our financials, all of these costs show up in there, so whether we paid for them with a purchase order or a check or by cash, they're going to show up in our financials. You know, I'll say that my office, I can't even get anybody to take a purchase order anymore, it's like people laugh at you, so most of our stuff is done with what we call P-card, so, you know, it is, but it is, it is all reflected in there, right? Okay, do we have other questions from council members, or would we like to go to public comment? So let's, I'm kind of going to public comment, so let's go to public com, oh, sorry, excuse me, yes. Can I what? I'm sorry, I need to acknowledge that Vice Mayor Hellman has left the meeting. So, Mr. Bell, would you like to make a comment?
Mark Bell, I don't think anyone has a question about using credit cards, and to disparage those who've looked into it, I find, actually, I can just go to the meeting right at the beginning about demeaning people, but it didn't seem to carry forth with town council members. I have a friend who was a CFO, first day in the job, she found out that the employees, each of them had an American Express card, 64. First thing she did, she called them all in. I think you've got way too many cards out there, and whoever you want to track them, you may think is fine, but, you know, go watch the movie All the Queen's Horses, you can see how well that worked for that town. 26 cards, that's a lot of cards. So I guess the other question I would have is, in that same report, was that we're paying $50 to write a check, is that still going on? I think that's a question that people would like to know. And the main reason that people were concerned about the credit cards was because they weren't being listed until recently, kind of like around the time of the recall started, as a matter of fact.
Mayor, if you'd like, I can clarify.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm too tired to find the reference to the cost of a check, but it's not that we're paying the bank $50, it's all of the processing costs, it's all of the time spent wasted by staff having to go through the check process. That is why credit cards were invented, which is before my banking history started.
Thank you, and I'm sorry that your trying to be responsive is now being read as something nefarious, when in fact, it was being responsive- nefarious, when in fact it was being responsive to requests from members of the community. Go ahead, Mr. Greenberg.
So, most businesses, most people running a household, most people running a government, actually revisit what their processes are and shop, especially when their expenses get high, or when they've got out-of-control expenses like we do here, where on an annual basis, our expenditures are exceeding our revenues for the last three years. You might be able to pull from prior years, but you're exceeding your revenues, and you know that you're doing it, so it's a cover-up. Anyway, related to covering things up, the credit cards, just like the town attorney's billings, weren't being disclosed for a long time. When was the last time the credit card services were shopped to find out whether we could get a better rate or money back? There's 2% back at Wells Fargo. Now, I don't know if there's a government restriction where we can only use a Cal card, but we could get money back on those significant expenditures, possibly. Why isn't this town council looking into it if we're trying to save money? Why, when we get the memos, when we get the financial statements on the check register, there's no memo, you don't even know what it consists of? Why aren't we shopping our banking relationships like San and Semo does on a regular basis? There's just a lot of lack of transparency and a lot of concern, or lack of concern, about where our dollars are going. It seems like a feigned concern when you act like something costs a bunch of money, but you just spend money left and right on everything, including an agenda item that didn't get pulled tonight, where you're giving a special interest group preference, and you have for two years.
Thank you, is there anyone online?
There are two callers online. The first one is Deb, followed by Mina. Deb, you may unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. I want to make a point that the purpose of bringing up this credit card business is that almost a million dollars was spent on credit cards over three years with no transparency, no reporting to the public as to what this money was spent on. And finally, we're seeing some reporting. It would be really nice, though, to see the vendor name on the reports. It would also be nice, as Todd mentioned, to see a memo, to see what the expenditures are covering. Also, I'm seeing in this last reporting, a lunch with a council member on apparently the town manager's card. I'm wondering why our business, our town business, is being conducted in a public setting in a restaurant, and, you know, why we're footing the bill for that instead of in the town hall. As far as the $50 per check and all of the staff time being spent to cover that, I'm an accountant. You write a check, costs some money to order checks from Deluxe, I know you guys order from Deluxe, so there's a per-check cost, but you write a check, you send it out, and every month you do a bank reconciliation. You know, it would take me probably a half hour to 45 minutes to do the bank reconciliation for the town of Fairfax checking account. So there's a cost there, and you know which checks are cleared and which haven't. So that's it, end of story. So I don't know where this $50 per check business is coming from, but it makes no sense to me.
Thank you, next, please.
The next speaker is Mina. Mina, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Mina from Cascade Canyon. I'm really tired, too, but I'm really concerned that we're spending so much time scrutinizing credit card usage when there's been no indication of that expenses are out of control. I mean, I hear people say that they are, but from my understanding, there's been a lot of audits that do, that's like the checks and balances of this process. And so is there a better way to kind of handle this kind of thing, instead of dragging on meetings? You know, of course, this isn't a perfect process, but if we start scrutinizing every minor detail, we lose sight of the bigger picture. So this kind of micromanagement sends the wrong kind of message, and it implies mistrust, which we all have heard over and over again, but I'm not sure if that's been earned. And then, you know, when are we going to get back to the business of running the town and addressing the issues that, you know, really impact our residents? Because I noticed, you know, that, I think I'm just tired, but I just would like to get back to like some of the more detailed stuff, and like, maybe you guys can handle this in a different way, I'm not sure. I'm just putting it out there, thanks.
Thank you, is there anyone else online? No. Okay, so I'm just going to say something here, which is that we are trying to balance a number of things here. So first off, we have people who are complaining that our meetings go on for too long, and yet everybody also wants to hear public comment, and generally in Fairfax, almost everybody wants to make public comment. We also have necessary business that we need to do, and then we have extra agenda items that are added on by council members that are usually above and beyond the business that we need to do, and yet there are things that we desire to discuss. So, you know, what we end up with is a meeting in which we actually pulled one item off of the agenda and continued another one, and here we are, like past 11 o'clock at night, still discussing stuff. So, I mean, maybe that's what people really enjoy, and it's worthwhile to go into all of that detail. And I'm also going to put in that we have a second meeting this month, because we had so much stuff to discuss that we couldn't put it all in this meeting. So, you know, people are making choices about what they would like to focus on, and I think it's important for us as council members and for members of the public to think about, like, you know, what do you really want to have focused on in terms of all of these items that are desirable, but, you know, something's got to give at some point. So we're trying to reach some sort of a balance, but what it's doing right now is just dragging us into late at night, we still have to talk about future agenda items and the town manager's report.
So before we do that, could I make a motion that we approve receiving the informational report?
I'm going to second that. Councilmember Edgar.
No.
Councilmember Garen Gully.
No.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes.
So what do we do with that?
That motion fails.
Okay, so we don't accept the credit card report, and we just, goes away? Okay, fine.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we, that we pull all credit cards back in, and that new credit cards be issued to department heads only.
So I don't think this is a time you could make that motion, but you could put it on a future agenda. We already had a motion, and we already voted on it, so I think, and we didn't have an alternate motion, so I think that you would have to put it on a future agenda.
It's not agendized for that item, it's not anything about the motion. The motion was to receive the informational report, and it failed. Okay, so you want it on a future agenda item, go ahead.
Okay, so let me just list them, and then we'll go ahead and talk about that being a future agenda item.
But I have something for a future agenda item.
Okay, well, let me just get through this, and then I will let people talk about that. So, wanted to mention, we had a number of agenda items brought up by council members, and again, a lot of the agenda items that we deal with every month are basic things that we need to do to keep the town moving. So stuff that we add is usually kind of frills on top of that. So we started out with a discussion of charter cities, which was something that Councilmember Edgar wanted, so that's in process, right? That's been continued till September. We started out with, we also had a second item tonight, which was brought by me, which is Action Minutes, which we're, you know, not doing. We have a pending future agenda item, which is a Parks Rules Committee, which was brought by Councilmember Garen Gully, and that is floating out there right now, because we need to settle some things about what's happening in our parks. We've had sort of an ongoing item that was addressed once, but will be addressed in the future, that was brought by Councilmember Hellman, which is informational about the fire stations, and so we have two people now who would like to add additional agenda items, and so I'm going to move back to those folks. I know that you have one pretty well formulated, then I'll move to Councilmember Edgar. So Councilmember Kohler?
Yeah, so when we were at MCCMC, we heard from some youth about recommendations for a smoking ordinance, and I would like to bring that for a future agenda item in the future, maybe not to the extent that they were requesting, but it doesn't need to be next meeting, it can be months from now, so just a future agenda item, thank you. Strengthening our smoking ordinance, I've done it three times in the past, so four times the charm.
Great. Excuse me, I just hit the eject button. Okay, Councilmember Edgar, what would you like to, would you like to put something on the future agenda?
On March 24th, I sent a memo to Christine, ask her to forward it to the town council. It's an issue that I had proposed. It's about public safety in downtown Fairfax. Downtown Fairfax has become so popular that it's now very congested, and we need to address pedestrian safety issues. Fairfax Farmers Markets is started already. Festivals of June, I spend a lot of time downtown and see where people are crossing Bleanus Road, at locations where we should add sidewalks, Mono, Sherman, even a crosswalk, putting a crosswalk back at Creek Road. Reducing speed limits in portions of downtown on Bleanus Road and on Broadway. Looking at that parking lot, parking lot of Mono Lane has become a problem with people turning it into a road because a portion of Mono Lane was closed. I don't know, is it closed permanently, or is that temporary, or what?
Can we, so I just wanted to draw this back for a second, so I think we've discussed this in a couple of prior meetings already, and we are addressing it, aren't we addressing it in May 21st?
Yeah, so the-
I've never discussed it, but anyway, downtown-
Yes, you did bring it up.
You know, downtown parking has become an issue, and I'm recommending we set up a task force of merchants, Fairfax staff, and ad hoc town council committee, and folks that live in downtown area, to take a look at the safety issues and make recommendations to the town council, rather than going out and hiring a consultant to do all, spend all this money.
We have-
Have people who live here and work here do it.
Yes, and I think we are going to address that on May 21st, we are talking about our downtown plan, we're having a bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, which does address traffic and safety issues for bicyclists and pedestrians, and we were talking about doing a traffic study, is that correct? So there will be, and those are funded items, right?
Yes, Mayor, and on our website, and we've promoted it in the newsletter, I think twice already, the applications for the bicycle pedestrian committee, which Councilmember Edgar mentioned, are already open, already up, so we want people to apply for that.
So, I mean, I don't mean to, you know, cut in, but I think that we already have that covered, and we've mentioned a couple of times when this has been raised in the past, that we did get funding to address these items, and that we'll be discussing them further at the next meeting. So, I mean, you know, we've kind of had this squishy process of putting things on the agenda, and part of the reason it's been difficult is that, you know, we have these meetings that run forever, the more we put on the agenda, the more meetings we end up having to have every month, but maybe that's what we need. Do we have any objections to putting the youth smoking ordinance on the agenda?
For the future.
For the future.
Future agenda item. I understand the idea, and I am working with, the county has presented this idea to MMA before, and so as they develop more of a model that we can use, we would certainly love to bring that back as soon as possible.
It's not necessarily the youth smoking ordinance, it's looking at strengthening our smoking ordinance more.
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Yeah, and then, you know, I hope that this is okay, but I do think we will be discussing what Councilmember Edgar just talked about at our next meeting, which is on May 21st, right?
I have a thought.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, just a sec, Councilmember, okay. One of you wanted to go, I think both Mr. Edgar and Mr. Garen Gully wanted to say something.
Let me finish up, I've got another one.
Great, thank you.
I've been getting complaints from merchants downtown about the burned-out Fairfax French laundry structure. That fire was, what, three and a half years ago? And our enforcement is, I like, zero. We let that burned-out structure sit in our downtown for three and a half years and have taken no action. I'm sure there's toxics under that French laundry site, probably leeching into the neighborhood, but is there some reason that we haven't addressed that burned-out structure and had it removed? I mean, am I the only one getting complaints from merchants downtown?
Well, it's a private property, and from what I understand, it was for sale, and so it's a private property, so what would we do to enforce that?
Oh, my gosh.
Frank, it's a private piece of property.
And I'm just going to say this-
How long would you allow a downtown burned-out building to sit there?
Can I just mention, this is not an agendized item, so public members of the-
No, I'm asking that it be agendized, okay?
Okay, well, that's what we need to get to, okay?
That's one thing, another thing is, the issue coming up is autonomous taxis, autonomous taxis. WEMO coming to Marin County, has any of the towns dealt with that? Should we be addressing that issue before they show up in Fairfax? So I thought that would be an item that maybe we ought to discuss in the near future. That's all, thank you.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, it would help us if we know that we have a majority of the council who wants us to spend time on these items. I will say, with WEMO, the permitting is coming through the state, so the state is in control of that, and I'm not, I don't believe that there's anything that towns can do, other than perhaps write a letter, you know, expressing your opposition to, you know, DMV or something of that.
Go through CPUC.
Thank you.
Okay.
Where are the PUC in Fairfax?
Okay, so, all right, so there's that one, and, you know, I think to some extent, I think the item about Fairfax, okay, just a sec, I think the item about the laundry needs to have a little bit more formulation before it goes on the agenda, like, I think it would be really great if you could talk to town staff about what the potential things that could be done are, so that you could put it on the agenda.
Okay.
It's called public abatement of a nuisance.
Yeah, it doesn't belong on the agenda, it's a code enforcement issue.
Okay, so maybe, you know, if people can talk to code enforcement or complain to code enforcement, something can be done, but it doesn't seem like an agenda item at this point. And you wanted to say something, Councilmember Garen Gully?
Well, I do, because I'm not sure of the process, it seems different than a long time ago when I was on the council. And I don't think it's an agenda item, but what is the process? There's only two people the council oversees, and I feel like, I don't know, I mean, I've been doing this for now, four or five months. So what is the, what's the process to have a review of Heather and Janet? As a person sitting on the council, I'd like to do it, not because I'm, you know, any negative thing, but I just think that I like to be part of a process to understand certain things, since I've been on the council, and what is the process to do that?
We do have an evaluation process.
What's that?
We do have an evaluation process, and they can explain it.
Okay.
Yeah, so the council would place the evaluation, there would be two separate, right? So two separate employees. So the council would place an evaluation of, say, the town manager on an agenda, it's a closed-session item, and that's how you, you know, and it would be similar for the town attorney.
Right, so I thought it was a closed door, so-
And typically, there would be no report out.
That's fine, too, I was just, so I'm curious as to when we can do that. I think we should do it in the next month or two, two months, maybe.
So we did one, when did we, we did an evaluation for Heather some time ago.
I think we did it in July or August of last year, that's about the time that we do those.
And I believe, I'm not sure if we've done an evaluation of the town attorney since we've been here, I think we did, because that's when we, okay, so when was that?
I think we, yeah, it was a little bit after that, so we could certainly do that in the future.
Yeah.
Can we make a-
Can we make a commitment to a closed-door session in the month of August or July? Because, I mean, I'm sorry, but there's two new council members, we haven't had a real chance to say too much, so it'd be nice to have that.
And I think that we can do that, and I also think it might be good to, you know, give it a little time so that you actually know how they work and how you work with them, but we can definitely put it on a future agenda, and either we can try to set a time or we can say we need to fit it in sometime within the next several months, depending on what we're-
That's what we need, thank you.
So I'm going to read off stuff that we have on here, so we've, I am going to do it, I'm sorry, I want to make sure that we're clear on what we have, so, because people are often concerned about their items not getting on the agenda. So right now, we have pending Park Rules Committee, Gergel, we have strengthening the smoking ordinance, we have this agenda item of evaluating the town manager and the town attorney. Other two items that we looked at were, you know, downtown public safety, we're actually going to be discussing that next meeting, and complaints about the French laundry, which we think can't really be agendized because it's a code enforcement issue, and the Waymo issue, which we don't really have a lot of control over, so I think those ones aren't going on future agenda, but we do have a couple of new future agenda items, so there you go. I think we can move on to the town manager's report.
All right, it's late, I'll be quick. Our solar app should be live any day now, that's great, we, we already do a very good job of expediting solar permits, but just wanted to point that out, and we did receive a grant for that as well. There is a lane closure scheduled for, I believe that's a Monday, 5:20 of this year, near 2:32 frostup, that is PG&E work, so just, you know, want to tell people so that they're not surprised anytime we hear about that. I do, you know, send out, anytime I get a traffic alert from Caltrans or whatnot, I send that out as part of the council updates so that you guys are aware of that. And lastly, I wanted to point out that I will be on vacation tomorrow through the 14th, so I'll be back on the 15th. Chief Tavranza has agreed to be the acting town manager while I am away, so, thank you.
And I think we're also doing possibly a mayor and town manager happy hour on May 19th, that's tentative, but that will be our next attempt to, to outreach.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I think we're going to adjourn the meeting in memory of Joan Kispie-Houston.